Such a homeless count. As a result of all of the extra work that subsidizing developers. Ensure that behind end is building in buffer. And knowing that they can always pay for the low end. This does not happen. Low income. Housing tax credits benefit the federal government, not the city holder. The impact fees are covered. And so when you make it look to the public, you're developing more house, more and more housing for for all the homeless and for all the lower AMI, for all the jobs that are not increasing in their salaries. And this is not beneficial. This is an illusion that you present to the public. That's unfair and unethical and unconscionable. Because they don't know that they're the ones that are paying, the taxpayer pays. Another thing I noticed lately specifically that I wanted to bring up was when buildings get a fourth floor. They automatically get into a situation where they, they can do onsite. Affordable housing, but they don't have to. If they've got a fourth floor, they get fifty fifty. Um, oh, wait, actually, no, excuse me, I'm wrong. If if they have a third floor. That like at Fru House. Fru House got away with their affordable housing onsite. After many hours of time spent by staff paid for by the taxpayers. And for an affordable housing senior center that never happened. I was stunned when months later, Fru House is gone and so is the housing, nothing. Um, when Papelios got their fourth story. They're compelled to do fifty percent onsite and fifty percent in lieu. But guess what? They've got a fourth floor. That just ruined the reason for having the affordable housing. It increased more, more, more unaffordable housing.
Thank you, Lynn. Sorry, the three minutes is up.
Thank you, Lynn. Was that the only speaker in the public participation section?
Yeah, no other hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll move a move ahead. There's a considerate, we have three call up items to consider tonight. The first is a standard wetland permit, W E T twenty twenty two dash zero 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 one five. Culvert replacement at fifty first street and Dryditch number two. Does anybody have questions or want to call up that item? Okay. The second is a floodplain development permit, F L D twenty twenty two dash zero 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 seven zero. And a standard wetland permit, W E T twenty twenty two dash zero 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 one three. Or eight sixteen Arapaho, a solar pergola. Does anyone have questions or want to call that item up? M L.
Uh, yes, thank you, John. Um, I don't know what happened to my hand. It's gone off my screen, so um, I do, I have some questions. Is the um, is there somebody here who can answer? Kristen, are you going to answer the question? Okay. Um, so I'm curious. Um. The, there are, there's a discrepancy about the shed. Is the shed, in the description, it says that the shed is going to be removed? And yet in the drawing, it shows that the shed is, or it says that that the panels will be, the pergola will be installed together with the existing shed roof. So I'm curious, is the shed coming or going?
My understanding was that the shed was going and then the pergola would be adjacent to or right next to where the shed exists.
Um, okay, uh, it it just, it doesn't say that in the
Okay. Um, in the, I will look into that.
Three of twenty. So the project description says that solar pergola installation together with existing shed roof. This supports a six point eight. That's the project information included.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not, it it just was unclear.
Yeah, I can follow up and and get you an email if you'd like with more clarity. I was going off of the structural drawings, which just showed the pergola standing alone, so.
Right.
I didn't, I I I had read that as if the shed was going away, but I'm I'm happy to follow up.
Um, there there may not need to be a follow up. I'm I'm, I've got three questions. So
Okay.
I'm looking at this. This is basically a carport. Is that correct?
I don't believe it's going to be used for a car. I think it's being used for um uh, like backyard shade and um, sort of like a relaxing area. But it it does, yeah, I I can see how it would, if you saw it from the street, it might look like a carport, but I don't believe it's being used for a car.
The aerial photographs online show cars parked there. So
Okay.
I mean, and it's perfect, right? It comes off an alley. It makes sense. It just isn't called a carport. And I guess my question relative to the carport is, does it being a carport impact the um the uh flood or the uh the application for the protection of the storm of the of the water?
Yeah, it um, so Emma, I just wanted to let you know that it looks like the owner of eight sixteen is here. Um, and they may be able to hop on and answer some of these questions a little bit more directly, but if it was a carport. I believe. Well, I'd like to confirm that whether or not it was, that's the intended use because there is some parking requirements around that.
Some parking requirements, oh, some requirements if it is parking.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, hang hang on, um, Magnus, can you go get daddy, please? There's water right over there. Apologies, my son is is home as well.
So that that was really my concern is, is it in fact a carport and how does that impact the um, the floodplain? Consideration, and I'm guessing that all of the coverage issues are you know, resolved as well.
Yeah, so for a carport, i- if it's, what the code says is if it's, if there's existing parking. The code says you can't have new parking in a high hazard zone, but if if there's existing parking already being used there, if a car is already being parked or a parking spot is in place. Um, I have not traditionally interpreted that as as new parking or expansion of parking.
No, I I'm just wondering if it is in fact, well, first of all, I'm sure this is why it's been called a pergola. It looks like a carport, but um, I'm just wondering if there would be a difference in the approval process if impacted with the carport.
Not necessarily, no, because what I look at is the structure and the obstruction. So how, if it would be obstructing the floodwaters.
So the cars on the ground aren't really a consideration?
Not if it's already being used that way. It's about um, continuing the use.
Got it. Um, can you? Is the owner here to see if that's, because you didn't think that that's how it was being currently used?
Correct, and it looks like they are, um, I'm not sure if you can bring them in, Jose Lemonis, Jim, sorry, Jimenez. Yeah, we we can bring him in as long as it's okay with the chair.
Yes, let's uh, let's get these questions answered right away.
Okay, Jose, go ahead. Or or please address your questions to him, he can speak.
I don't see him.
Um, he just popped in, but he's unmute, so maybe he doesn't.
Oh, okay. Um, so Jose, my question is, good evening, um, thank you for being here. My question is, is this um, proposed pergola uh, going to be a carport? And is there currently parking on this area of the site?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So it's um, sorry, we had two devices connected. Um, the, this is on on our parking area, so the the area where it is, is is where we sometimes park our cars, although we have a garage next door, which is where we normally park the one car we have. Um, but the, really, this is the option, we, the only option we could find uh, to install solar panels. Because our house is very shaded, so when we contacted Namaste and those guys, they said you have too much shade. So then where we have some um, sun is over the parking area. But in the parking area, we had all these flood restrictions, so this was one way we we found that we could get around it. And in response to what you were mentioning earlier, the the shed will be removed. At the beginning of the process, we were hoping to keep it and whatever, but then it was made clear that that was not possible. But I I don't know, there were so many documents and so many versions that perhaps some of what you have is some of the old versions.
Great, thank you. You've answered my questions. Basically, I was, I was just wondering if something different um, would land if it was in fact a carport and not a, not just a pergola, and it sounds like it wouldn't. So I have no questions and I have no need to call it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Emma. I appreciate it.
Okay, and then the final item is a standard wetland permit, W E T twenty twenty two dash zero 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 one seven for an open space and mountain parks wetland restoration project. Does anybody have questions on that one? Mark? Oh, I saw your hand.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, oh, oh, weird. Anyway, I I'm still uh figuring out how to use Zoom at this late date, I guess. Anyway, I I have a uh a question for O S M P staff as I read through that memo. Uh, and I, and you know, I'm not a botanist or anything, so I was just looking at the list of uh, plants and uh, different types of habitat that they were trying to create or recreate. My question is, does, is milkweed a native species to this area? And if so, does this site offer any um, opportunity to plant or restore milkweed? For monarch butterflies?
I am not sure that O S M P staff is um, here. And and that is a level of detail that my engineering degree never covered, but I'm I am happy to, um, I am also happy to email Adam Gaylord is the applicant on this and he he would know that very well, and I'm happy to email him and
That's that's fine. So I have no interest in calling it up, but
Okay.
Just a point of curiosity.
It's a great question. I'll ask him.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I guess uh planning board is not interested in calling any of these items up. Thank you, Kristen. Okay. So we'll move ahead into our public hearing item for tonight, which uh which is a matter that many of us have seen before. We get another crack at it. So this is a site review criteria update ordinance. And we'll start out with a presentation by staff. And there there's no applicant in this uh, matter, but uh, the there'll be an opportunity to ask questions of staff and then we'll move into a hopefully a pretty systematic discussion that will address both both of the questions laid out in our uh, agenda and materials tonight. And in, just to make it clear how we intend to proceed, we will first have the opportunity for all board members to say uh, some general comments about how they believe this uh meets the intended objectives. And then we'll go through section by section and each board member will have the opportunity to to comment or uh, say if they find something they find unsatisfactory. And then explain why, but we will focus our comments hopefully tonight on substance rather than presentation, so we uh, do not intend to move commas around too much tonight. Uh, unless there's a, an issue of substance at stake. So with that, I, oh, Sarah, go ahead.
No, just a question, um. Because there's no applicant, can we um, can we ask questions of staff? Do you want us to ask questions of staff during the presentation or after they, after Carl's presented?
Oh. Let's see what Carl thinks or or Charles. What do you prefer?
I think it's entirely up to the board, uh, whether you want to ask questions as I go through the presentation or after. Um, sometimes it's helpful for us to get through the entirety of the presentation, since there might be some items that will get answered in the presentation, but I I don't mind getting interrupted in the presentation if you do want to pose a question. Either way.
All right, I'm a fan of getting questions answered as quickly as possible while you're thinking about them.
You know, in in this case, John, that may actually make sense, since a lot of what it is that we'll be presenting is updates to the work. That kind of represent, you know, where the ordinance has been since we last spoke with planning boards, so that that might make great sense tonight.
Okay, so board members, feel free to ask questions at the right time.
John, can we also, as we're going through section by section, if we have a specific question about something that's written in the ordinance, can can we ask questions at that time as well?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and Sarah has has done a great job. She's laid out a nice spreadsheet, so we'll be keeping track of uh, people's comments, hopefully, and uh we anticipate having a coherent uh, coherent response to staff's inquiries here. So
That's great.
Thank you.
Great, um, thanks very much again. Good evening, members of the board. Carl Geiler, our um senior policy analyst will be presenting staff analysis this evening, so Carl, take it away.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, good evening, board members. I'm going to pull up my presentation real quick. So tonight, we'll be discussing ordinance eighty five fifteen, which relates to updating the site review criteria. Uh, we talked about this in May of this year, so this reflects uh, updates that we've made up to the ordinance since our last discussion. So the purpose tonight is for planning board to make a recommendation to city council on the ordinance, just to cover uh, what's in this presentation tonight. I'm going to more briefly go into the background in the presentation, um, since we've talked at length about this in May. Um, and then part two, I'll be walking uh, the board through the changes uh, to the ordinance. Uh, then we'll go to the key issues, the two questions, uh, provide our staff analysis uh, regarding those questions. We'll also be summarizing the public comment, most mostly what we've received uh, since May on the latest version of the ordinance. And then conclude with the staff recommendation. So starting with the back ground, again
I'm sorry, Carl, are you, uh, do you mean to be sharing your screen? Because we're we're not seeing a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You were on a roll. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no worries.
Very excited about this tonight, by the way. Great work.
Thanks. Let's try this again. Can you all see it now?
Uh, yeah, now it's showing up.
Okay.
But we're seeing it, uh, we're not seeing it in slideshow mode. We're seeing your whole screen with the um, slide deck down the side.
Okay. Getting some interesting pop ups. There was always a technology issue.
Keeps things lively.
I guess so. Um, I'm going to try this again.
We're still kind of seeing it with your slide deck down the side.
You can try that little icon on the bottom right, next to the slider.
Sorry, bottom right. Next.
Keep going, keep going, not that one. Two more over. That one.
There you go. I apologize, uh.
Carl, it might be showing on a different screen, so maybe double check. Unshare and reshare.
Okay. I've done this so many times, I've never had this problem before.
They keep changing it up on you, just when you think you learn the platform, they have to go and uh, make you have to learn it again.
Yeah, I think I have it now. So there we go, right?
It's it's still doing the same thing, but I, we can see your slides, if you don't mind us seeing the deck as it advances.
That's fine.
So the other thing too, Carl, is Devin can pull it up if it's in a shared folder.
That's what I was going to say, Carl, is that what I've seen successful in the past when it's misbehaving like this is just have someone else run the slideshow, like send them the file or send them the link.
Okay, um, let me try that.
We absolutely blame Zoom.
Yeah.
But Carl, you might want to stop sharing your screen now.
Okay. Interesting, I've not had this problem before.
Yeah, it's weird. I I've seen it. You're not the first person to deal with this, and it it seems very intermittent and like odd, so. Yeah, not your fault.
Hey, Devin, I'm going to save it in our planning board memos folder. Would you be able to access it from there? In the site review folder?
Uh, yeah, I'll go in there right now and check.
Did Elon Musk acquire Zoom or something? Like, what's going on here?
Clearly some changes here.
You need to tell a story while we're waiting, Carl.
Because he doesn't have enough to do.
Yeah.
No, I I was actually going to make some comments. I'll make them now while Carl's trying to get this up. That, you know, this is next to the longest night of the year. And uh, I I I don't, sometimes I get kind of the seasonal uh, you know, disorder of feeling down and stuff, and I hadn't really felt it until like tonight, last night, tonight, I was like, oh, yeah. Anyway, I was just thinking about staff, and this must seem like the longest project of the decade, not the year, but
Certainly has felt that way at times.
As as I read through the memo, I was so reminded that this project was going on, you know. Started a long time ago. And uh, it's been, it's been through multiple councils, the political winds have shifted. It's been through multiple planning boards and, you know. I I I found my personal response kind of like, okay, let's put a fork in it, that's uh and and not that, not that we should have that attitude, but anyway, I I just, it was just a funny coincidence with being a almost longest night of the year.
All right, Devin, are you seeing it by chance?
So I am seeing it, um, but it is downloading onto or trying to open. Um, we are at a solid twelve percent trying to open.
Probably.
It is an extraordinarily large file, which could be contributing to this, uh, since there's a lot of backup slides and everything. You just a testament to the the volume and time that that's gone into this uh, in is showing in the presentation.
I think there needs to be like an equivalent label for like endurance athlete, but like as a planner, because that's like, that's what we've got going on here.
Carl gets the gold star for that one, for sure.
For sure.
Many reasons, not just those.
Well.
I'll second that.
If this was planned.
Lisa's child is betraying, it's time to go to sleep. Maybe they're, they're worn out by this too.
All right, is it, so Devin
How's that looking?
That looks good.
Yay!
Yeah. So like slide three. Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks for your patience, everyone. So I just wanted to, if you could go the slide before this, Devin. So just getting to the background of the project, um, there's been some perceived unpredictable outcomes with the site review process since it's been really initiated. Site review kind of originated in the in the seventies and has evolved over time. But the site review criteria haven't really been holistically or comprehensively updated in that time. There's been some additions to it as um, catchalls over time, but this has been the most um, comprehensive overview and analysis of all the criteria and updating those criteria. And these are the goals and objectives that related to this project that were set out by the uh, city council several years ago when this project started as part of the community benefit project in twenty eighteen. So specific to site review, it was to identify incentives to address community economic, social and environmental objectives of the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan. Determine additional design standards for projects requesting a height modification and identify other aspects of the site review criteria to further city goals and create more predictability in projects. So this project really kind of grew out of some concerns that came out of the community related to particularly larger scale projects that were being built. Typically, fourth and fifth uh, level or story buildings uh, that got height modifications, but it kind of begged a need to take a, relook at the site review criteria and see how we could improve it uh, to meet these goals and objectives. Uh, next slide, please. So the board will remember that in uh, twenty nineteen, we did adopt changes to the site review criteria criteria that related specifically to community benefit. So any additional floor area above a floor area ratio maximum or any additional floor area in a fourth or a fifth story uh, does require additional permanently affordable housing uh, either onsite or in increased in lieu fees or increased commercial linkage fees. So this is already in the code. Um, site review projects are typically required for in in different zones if they trigger a certain amount of floor area, a certain number of units. Or if an applicant requests modifications to things like setbacks or height. Uh, most site reviews are staff level, um, they are all subject to call up by the planning board or citizen appeal. Um, in order for them to be approved, they have to meet the detailed criteria of section nine two fourteen H, which is the focus of our discussion tonight. Uh, and none of this is changing, um, then any request for additional density or height modifications still automatically will require a a planning board public hearing. Uh, so next slide, please. So when we talked about this at the October work session in twenty twenty one and also in May uh, earlier this year, these were some of the words that are in our current site review criteria that have been uh, kind of raised as being ambiguous, uh, people. You know, what is human scale? What is pedestrian friendly? What are authentic materials? People come to different conclusions on these topics. So while these words are in the latest ordinance, we've made the the criteria language more descriptive to really better define what these mean. And that's been a really critical part of this project is in trying to increase that level of predictability is really better defining what these mean. So uh, that's what we'll talk about tonight. So the next slide, please. So just going to briefly talk about the the version of the ordinance that the board looked at in May. Um, there were concerns, obviously, but by some on board about the level of prescriptive nature of the criteria. That's what was shown in the the prior ordinance. Uh, we had gotten some direction from the prior council, um, and there was some advice uh, from, I I brought up Victor Dover, uh, a well-known architect and planner in the in the country. Uh, that making it more prescriptive as to what the community wants uh, would increase that level of predictability and and get better design projects. So that's kind of the direction we took. We 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 kind of took in inspiration from the form-based code, because we've had some successful design outcomes with those projects. So we tried to integrate that into the criteria. Uh, also tried to address some higher level policy issues in the criteria related to, you know, greenhouse gas emission reduction, uh, environmental protection, historic preservation, housing diversity, things of that nature. Uh, we also made the criteria more descriptive, like I said, um, a lot of the site design, open space, landscaping and transportation-related criteria were made much Landscaping and transportation-related criteria were made much more descriptive as to what it means to meet the criteria rather than it. Being uh, very discretionary and not very clear. Um, so we'll all give a brief overview of uh, what we talked about last time. So next slide, please. Um, on May nineteenth of this year, planning board reviewed the ordinance. Um, the discussion by the board is found in attachment B of the packet. Uh, we did a detailed line-by-line discussion of the criteria, as you remember. Um, back in October twenty twenty one, the board at that time was largely supportive of the ordinance direction. Um, in terms of the prescriptive nature and and where staff was headed. Uh, but when we had the discussion in May of this year, uh, this particular board was was more was largely mixed. On the outcome of the ordinance being uh, too, you know, pres- prescriptive. So one of the key issues. We raised was was the ordinance too prescriptive. So. The board was kind of mixed on that topic. There were some that felt that the criteria were appropriately prescriptive and others felt. Uh, that it was too prescriptive and needed to be uh, dialed back a bit. Um, because of these concerns, uh, especially also, we we talked about the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan criterion being too limiting. Um, the energy conservation and greenhouse gas emissions reduction criteria, um, not going far enough and some confusion about. The the language used for the height modification, the board at that time. Or in May, uh, did not recommend that the ordinance proceed to city council, rather. Um, they wanted the questions of the prescriptive nature brought before the design advisory board, uh, to see what their thoughts were. So. Um, after the May meeting, we did proceed to the design advisory board. Uh, next slide, please. So the the DAB discussion on the site review criteria that the minutes for that is found in attachment C. Um, so when we talked to DAB, they were complimentary of the work that was done. In the ordinance, uh, they felt like a lot of the things that were derived from the form-based code would. Likely uh, increase the baseline for good design in projects. Um, however, the the DAP did have strong concerns that the criteria were too prescriptive. Um, and they were concerned that if it was applied citywide, uh, that you would see too many buildings that would start looking the same throughout the city. Um, their recommendation was that the criteria should be revised to be less prescriptive. Uh, that the criteria should function more like guidelines, uh, and include other design solutions just. Uh, this beyond just the form-based code type requirements that were in the criteria. So we also had a study session set with city council. Uh, in August, uh, we felt, uh, since we were going to them already for the used uh, standards and table. Project that we would also talk about the site review project since this particular. Site review project hadn't been addressed by the current council. So we felt like we should give them some background on the project. Uh, and ask them whether we felt they felt we were on the right track as far as meeting the goals and objectives of the project. That, uh, so next slide, please. So August twenty fifth. Uh, we we had a discussion with council about the site review project as a whole. Um, the council felt that the proposed ordinance. Was was largely consistent with the original goals and objectives that were set for the project in twenty eighteen, but. Uh, the council did agree with DAB and some members of planning board that the criteria. Uh, were too prescriptive and that we should again dial it back. Uh, make the language more flexible, more discretionary, um, and really kind of draw from how we wrote the criteria for the open space site design. Transportation to be more descriptive, uh, rather than prescriptive. Uh, there was a sentiment that the design content related to form-based code and good design was good. And that that shouldn't be lost in the criteria. So we were asked that that content. Be retained in the criteria, but just that the language be um, more generalized and in 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 enable applicants to. Find other design solutions to meet that intent. Um, so basically what they were asking for is a hybrid between the existing criteria that we apply today and the positive elements of that ordinance from May. Um, we also discussed the the comp plan criteria that they. They also felt that like the planning board that it should be broadened to allow more policies to to apply, but just that maybe the language had to be. Um. More clear about how to apply the policies, uh, and I'll talk a bit about how we've addressed that. Uh, we also talked about the greenhouse gas emissions uh, criteria. Uh, they felt it was overly complex, uh, with all the different options that were proposed, but. Uh, many of the council members felt that some of the requirements should just be baseline requirements that apply citywide rather than being. In uh, just site review. So what they asked was that the reduction of of concrete and carbon in concrete and projects be. Uh, added to the um, the energy code updates that would occur in twenty twenty three. Uh, as well as uh, the electrification, things that we were proposing. Um, so. Uh, we do have Carolyn Elum here tonight if there are questions on that, but uh, there is an intent to move forward with moving some of those requirements into. Um, the actual ECC uh, coming forward next year. Uh, what we focused on with this particular ordinance is uh, just getting uh, to net zero or being um. Ten percent better than the ECC. So I'll talk about that as well. Next slide. So the key issues tonight, um, as as outlined in the memo, um, is the two questions before you. So does planning board find that the revised ordinance addresses prior concerns? And meets the objectives of the project? And then secondarily, does planning board recommend any modifications to pass along with its recommendation to city council? So we. Um, this, we think this would be a good way to guide uh, the complex discussion on the ordinance. Uh, next slide, please. So attachment A contains uh, the ordinance. I wanted to bring up this slide again. This is what we showed back in May, but just the. The approaches that we took to the ordinance. Um, this is largely the same as we've we've been doing all along. It's really to emphasize. Criteria that address important city policies. To reorganize the criteria in a more top-down approach. And what we mean by that is starting at the policy level. And then kind of working to like a site design, site-wide, it's in a relationship. With neighboring properties and then moving towards actual buildings where they're placed. And then the the actual design of buildings, getting down to the detail of building materials, and that's. What we've done, uh, where there's areas of where we could simplify, reduce redundancy. Uh, eliminating some uh, criteria that haven't been used or have are not feasible or overlap. We've we've removed those criteria. Um, and then the last one is really adding more descriptive language to make the criteria less subjective. Um, I've highlighted the more prescriptive and measurable part because obviously we're we're coming back with an ordinance where we've dialed that back. A bit, so we've kind of expanded on the descriptive language part. Uh, but we still feel like the ordinance that's being brought for you tonight still meets these approaches. Uh, next slide, please. So getting into the the changes, um, like I said, the the latest ordinance is less prescriptive, has more descriptive lang- dis. Script of language, um, but we have retained some pres- prescriptive elements on some things that we feel are quite important, um, like housing diversity. Amount of window glazing, building materials. The language that you saw before is still in here. It's just some of it's been softened a little bit just to allow for some other. Solutions, but we try to write it in a way where it's a best practice, like. If somebody comes or an applicant comes and we look at a design and it's not. Quite meeting the criteria, we might then fall back on, well, you, we do think you need to add. You know, windows to meet that minimum glazing to meet this level of quality. Um, it's it's a little less rigid, but we still have inc- included that language to really guide. Projects so that when they come in the door, they're in a better place to uh, be more successful and 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 being able to get approval. We tried to simplify and reorganize the cri- criteria as much as possible to to make it more understandable. Uh, the prior ordinance had a public realm section, which was kind of the bridge between site design. In building design. I think some of the feedback we got was that it that was. Added to the confusion. Some of those criteria really relate to landscaping or actual building design. So we've just folded those. Criteria into those respective sections rather than having a separate section. So again, looking at areas where we can simplify as much as possible. Uh, you'll notice that we've also updated the purpose section, so it better reflects the content of the criteria. So it's kind of the main themes of the criteria as you move along are better captured in the purpose statement. Uh, based on the board concerns, we've tried to simplify the language related to the BVCP. We've reintroduced the on balance language. Um, we would, it would allow, you know, more policies to apply to projects, just making it specific that. It should be policies that are intended to apply to development projects or the built environment rather than. Uh, policies that are really aimed at the city or county to update. You know, programs or things like that, just making sure that the policies are appropriately applied to projects. Language has been added to uh, make that more clear. Uh, next slide, please. The energy conservation or the greenhouse gas emissions reduction. Uh, criterion has been greatly simplified based on uh, the input we got from the board. Uh, and city council, um, again, um, the electrification elements, the the concrete carbon reduction. Requirements are going to be folded into the updates to the um. The ECC in twenty twenty three. Um, in this case, uh, the criteria basically says that any buildings or additions. That are greater than thirty thousand square feet in size would either have to be net zero or at least ten percent better than the energy. Code, um, we feel that effectively, um, you know. With larger scale projects shows that they're being held to a a a bigger standard because of. You know, things that they're requesting in the projects and their scale and impact on the community. The housing diversity criteria is largely similar to what we proposed before. We did receive some feedback from the board. That, uh, if there was a project that was predominantly just ELUs. Um, that there'd be a requirement that there should be at least two housing types. So we've incorporated that into the language. We've added one. Uh, part of that criterion that uh, allows for any other compelling community housing needs. If a project didn't meet. That housing diversity, they could propose, like it might be a different type of project that fulfills a community housing need. So there is. A little bit of flexibility that's been added to that criterion, um, to just kind of lower that level of rigidity. Uh, the open space criteria are are probably the most similar to the prior ordinance that the board uh, looked at, um. Since it was already written in that descriptive manner that we've tried to do elsewhere. Um, the the biggest difference is that some of the courtyard requirements that we had proposed for larger projects. That was in the open space criteria, we've moved out of the open space criteria and applied to. Those projects that would be asking for additional floor area or height, just so there's an additional level of design. Quality and breaking up mass uh, that would apply. Uh, to those projects. I'll talk more about that when we get to that section. So next slide, please. Uh, like I said, the public realm section's been consolidated into the building design and landscaping sections. Overall, um, the language about human scale, attractive streetscape. Pedestrian interest that has been overly discretionary and and somewhat unclear. Uh, is better defined in the criteria now. It's more descriptive of how you meet that. Um, we've also added a definition of public realm into the land use code uh, through this ordinance. Um, just to make that more clear. On site and building design, this is kind of where you can see the difference between the more. Um, specific metrics that were in the prior ordinance that caused some concern as being too. Prescriptive, um, rather we've updated the ordinance to have basically an intent statement at the beginning of each. Section about what the level of of design quality should be. And then in order to. Meet that intent, we list some criteria that would be um, factors that the board or staff would consider in their reviews. This is the same way that we. We review site reviews now. Uh, it's just that the criteria are more specific as to how it's. It can be met. So that language at the beginning of each section says in determining whether this intent is met. The approving agency will consider the following factors. Um, so this is some of the input we've gotten is to try to dial back that prescriptive nature of the prior ordinance. So. One uh, big bit of simplification is now that the criteria has been updated to be. More discretionary than the prior ordinance, not as discretionary as the current set. Of um, criteria, but that there's no longer a need for the alternative compliance section that we had all those specific criteria, not. Each individual thing would have to be called out and with additional criteria. So this has been removed uh, from the ordinance. Uh, next slide, please. So throughout the building design section, that's where you'll see kind of the biggest changes to the ordinance. Again, we've kept a lot of that design content that we think. Yields good design, but we've added some additional design solutions. So. We still have a section on building materials that specify what we, you know, consider high-quality uh, building materials. Materials that make buildings look like enduring permanent buildings rather than temporary or overly complicated, you know, low-quality design. Uh, we still have, uh, we're still proposing. Uh, a window glazing percentage per floor. We think that's a an important part. Of building design against, again, the the language is a little more flexible, but it's still kind of drives home how important these are. Uh, instead of, you know, expression lines, which I think caused concern in a number of reviewers, we've added a new. Detailing section that gives additional design options for uh, giving some uh. Detailing on buildings without them looking overly complex or complicated. Um, and then the landscaping. Re- uh, standards are largely the same as before, where it would have to exceed minimum standards by fifteen percent. So there are again, some elements that still are. Somewhat pers- uh, prescriptive than others. With the ordinance becoming more discretionary than the prior iteration, we've reintroduced. The compatibility language that we didn't have in there before. So there are findings that have to be met. Uh, by the board or staff, um, that a project has is is compatible with its design and massing is. Compatible with the surrounding area. And we've tried to make it clear that there might be areas that. Where you have the existing character uh, as as a guide, or it might be an emerging character. Um, where it's changing and and going into a a a better type of design, you know, having, getting rid of parking lots along a street, for instance. Uh, or it might be meeting adopted area plans or sub-community plans, just making it clear how that compatibility finding would be met. Uh, next slide, please. So this is an important part of the ordinance because it's one of the main objectives of the project is. Increased requirements for those buildings that are. Over the height limit or over an FAR limit in limited situations. So. We tried to simplify the criteria that apply to. Um, taller, larger buildings. This is what we consider the land use intensity modifications. So, um, if there's buildings that are not over three stories, like talking about a height modification that might be due to height or due to slope. You know, where it might be just a a couple of feet over the height limit. We don't want to apply all these arduous standards to those. So there's just a general. Compatibility um, finding that's been added to the criteria, but for those projects that are asking for. Um, more than three stories and are 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 those buildings that generated a lot of concern. Um, at the beginning of this project, uh, we are still including a lot of those requirements from the form-based code again, is more of like best practices. Uh, Sarah?
You're muted, Sarah.
Apologies. The um, material you sent actually has maximum building length of two hundred feet, not a hundred and fifty.
That's right.
So.
We've actually, we, yeah, we we. Yeah, the prior ordinance was a hundred and fifty, the the latest version, uh, based on some feedback we got from. The site review focus group, we changed that to two hundred in the in the last few weeks. So I apologize for that. That's correct.
Just to make sure I was clear which one it was. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey. Yeah, just a question for courtyard space. Does that mean it has to be open to the sky above, or can it be a covered space like in, for example, that. I think it's called the Vexel building where there's a basement. Uh, courtyard, but. There's uh, floors.
The intent is that it be open to the sky.
All right, so that's clear in the. In the material.
We can look at the language and certainly, you know, make that clear as well.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, generally, we, when we look at the open space standards in in our code, they usually, the open space usually has to be open to the sky. In those cases where it's not. Open to the sky, it's like really specific in the code about building atria and things like that, like they're very limited. Circumstances where it it doesn't have to be open to the sky, but the vast majority does.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, there's maximum building length is best practice is two hundred feet. Um, and then if there's any buildings that are over a hundred and twenty feet in length, there's those facade variation requirements that. We had last time we. We had last time, we, we've really simplified that just to say that if you're over a hundred and twenty feet, you should have. You should look, the building needs to be designed to look like two separate buildings at least. And that those should look like two separate buildings by varying, you know. Windows like materials, colors, roof forms. At least two of those would have to be met to make it look like two separate buildings. Uh, we've simplified the roof cap types language, uh, that we brought in from the form base code. In this case, it's just. Criteria that really aims at getting more pitched roofs and getting more roof variations and trying to avoid. Um, the boxy, flat roofed buildings that have caused some concern in the community. Mark.
Maybe this is the right spot, maybe later you can tell me if it's later. Does the roof cap type allow for? Anything more creative, different pitched roofs that are actually screening for mechanical, what I'm getting to is, you know, we. We have uh, kind of what I interpreted to be great allowances for mechanical screening. Um, in terms of materials and, and so forth, but yet we, we prohibit or restrict. Pitched roofs and some other things. So anyway, does, does any of this update address that? Uh, particular.
There is a specific criterion in the ordinance that. Tries to raise the bar for concealing. Mechanical equipment above our sta- or just regular standards in the apartment standards of the code. And obviously roof forms to shield it are, are, are part of that. Um, it's not really. Specific as far as, there's another thing we keep hearing from the community is encouraging pitched roofs. Maybe that might be a little bit over the height limit. So we did make an update. To the site review criteria in the last iteration that would allow um, some pitched roofs, um, some flexibility, but we've. We've been asked to even go further and make it a conditional use or a conditional height. Requirement. So that might be something that we do down the road, but we, we, we do address that in the criteria. ML.
I just have a, a quick question, Carl. Are these two? Um, photos that you have on here, are they, um, would you consider them? To offer the pitched roof and height variety that you're talking about? Are these good examples or not so good examples?
Um, I, I don't know that I put these particular pictures in for that alone. Um, they both. Are largely um, flat roof buildings. They meet the flat roof cap type in the. Form base code. I think I was just trying to show context of a variety of roof of building heights. Um, these two buildings, I think, do a good job at that. Because there are portions of the buildings that are three stories and others that are four stories. Um, so that was the primary reason I put those. Pictures in.
Thank you.
Uh, so we talked about the, the courtyard space requirement, um. That's actually an existing requirement that's in the code that applies to the RH three zone, which is a high density residential zone. We found it to be, you know, fairly successful. So that's why we think it would make sense to put in. This particular section applying to um, taller, larger buildings because it does help break up the mass. And get some additional um, high quality uh, ground level open space. We've uh, also added um, the view protection criteria, which is largely the same. As the prior ordinance, it really just. Sets out the specific conditions where there's going to be a higher level of scrutiny on impact to views of the mountains. Um, where, where the current criteria don't. Um, go into any um, specifics on that. Um, and we've also, you know, added compatibility uh, criteria for the buildings that are over three stories as well. Uh, so next slide, please. So this is the um. Last slide on the content of the ordinance. So. We did um, address a couple of other things that are kind of miscellaneous um, in talking to our. Urban designer, she had indicated says there's some concern about. Uh, some buildings that have come in with pitched roofs that instead of putting. You know, tiles or things like that, they've just put roofing membranes that become. Visible from the street and, and the concern about that is that. If they're on a sloped roof over time, that wear and tear on that roof uh, doesn't look very good. So we've added a. Criterion that addresses that. So if, if it's on a sloped roof, you can't use uh, certain types of roofing membranes that are visible. Um, and the acoustic studies piece, uh, this is something that we talked about in May, uh, with the board. There were some concerns about adding a requirement for applicants to do. Um, a noise study. If they were located near a noise source because it would just add to the expense of a project. What we've done is. We basically just derived a requirement that we already have in the code for residential and industrial. Zones that already has a. Uh, minimum standard for wall construction to minimize noise. So it actually wouldn't. Require a, a study. They just like, if they're within two hundred feet of an expressway or a railroad, they just have to. Have a certain wall construction to minimize noise and that's already in the code, but applies. Um, this will apply to any project in the city that's in, uh, in those areas. And then lastly, uh, we did notice that there's some confusion about the language in the code related to polls. Um, a lot of polls, if they're over thirty-five feet and up to fifty-five feet. Are a city manager or staff level review subject to planning board call up. And there are even some conditions where there's public. Utility polls that might be over fifty-five feet that. Are staff level review and can be then called up by city council. This is an existing. Requirement that's in the code. Um, we just wanted to make that more clear. So we've updated. The language in the code related to that. And there's also specific. State laws that apply to those reviews that we wanted to reference in the code. So we've added. Uh, some language in the ordinance related to that. So it's all points of clarification and making, you know, the criteria better address. Um, polls if they come in. Obviously, it's not a very common. Um. Thing to come through, but we wanted to make sure that we're ready if, if something were to come through that we can uh, review that. Uh, next slide, please.
Carl.
Yeah.
On the polls, uh, issues. Um, I, in looking at the language, it, it identifies. Power and gas as the utilities and the emergency operations. But I didn't see, see that it specifically called out, uh, you know, cell telephone type. Facilities, which is something that I know that. The county has wrestled with a lot. Is that included in the emergency operations and utilities?
It is not. Um, there is a specific definition of polls that's in the code already. So this is really intended to. Focus on public utility type polls. Uh, anything beyond that, that doesn't meet that definition of poll is a private facility, basically. So we look at it the same way we do any building. So a poll. Over thirty-five feet would require a height modification and would be subject to all the. The site review criteria and we'd review it the, the way we do any building um, for visual impacts. Just polls that are public utility polls have a, a different level of, of review per the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so just touching on public comment, I, I talked about this in, in the May presentation. You know, we've been doing ongoing. Outreach on this since twenty eighteen, but on the site review criteria, it's largely been since. Twenty twenty, we've done a, a variety of ways of reaching out. To the community, reaching out to, to certain uh, groups. To make them aware of the changes. We've been sending out emails to architects and interested parties. Um, we've been meeting with the site review focus group, reaching out to our neighborhood representatives. We've been doing the planning news. Letter just to kind of make them um, aware of what changes have been made. So what you're seeing on the slide is actually our. Prior feedback, uh, prior to the current. Uh, ordinance, uh, that, that just as a, as a summary. But if you could go to the next slide, uh, Devin, this is the, the more recent feedback we've gotten. So. Um. When we met with the site review focus group and I, I assume there might be some folks here tonight, uh, that will speak to this. Um, the group was, was more supportive of the latest version of the ordinance, uh, being less prescriptive. Um, there were comments that it would provide better guidance to applicants on how to design a high quality project. Um, and one, one thing we heard was that, that the criteria kind of read in a sense like staff comments. To applicants, uh, which is helpful because we, we hope that that helps the process and hopefully makes it. More successful and that with the criteria being more descriptive that. They would be coming in the door with a, a, a project more likely to be approved than we might get today where there's a lot more back and forth like, you know, that doesn't. Quite meet the criteria yet. You need to do this or, you know, things like that. So. Uh, we thought that was helpful feedback, um. They did talk about the greenhouse gas emissions reduction requirement and that it would be a, a bit difficult to determine compliance at site review since. A lot of that energy modeling wouldn't be completed at that stage. So we did. Update the language to be clear that there'd be a condition of approval and they would have to do that later. And it would apply, but they would have to demonstrate it at time of building permit. Um, so we, we incorporated that. Um, there was a comment that live work should be added as a housing type. Uh, as part of the housing diversity of housing type criteria. So we did add that. Uh, they had some concerns about the screening criteria. Um, we, we still felt like the criteria that we have in there is, is appropriate. I mean, it just basically. Puts more scrutiny on how you screen mechanical equipment, but there's a number of other criteria that can address that. Um, we heard some concerns about the public entry requirement every fifty feet being too rigid. So we did. Soften up that criteria a bit for like residential uses and industrial uses. Again. You know, making the point that the criteria are more discretionary now, so it's. Not going to be like before where it just rigidly has to be met every fifty feet. There might be other ways to accomplish the design intent. Um, again, su- suggestions for more lenient height measurements to get more pitched roofs. That's something that. Uh, we think is encouraged in the, in the code here, but we, we might want to go further with that in the future, uh, based on this feedback. Um, we did hear some concern that, you know, some of the criteria, you know, are still too rigid. Minimum out of windows per floor, maximum building width, the amount of high quality building materials. Uh, again, we've tried to dial back percentages and numbers, uh, but just still some concerns on that. Um, and also some concern about the additional requirements that might apply to. Taller, larger buildings and that section was too confusing. So we did try to work on that section a little bit more to make it less confusing. Uh, next slide, please. So this is key issue number one. Uh, does the, the board find that the revised ordinance addresses prior concerns and meet the objective of the project? Um, obviously our analysis in the memo is that we still believe that the. Updated ordinance would meet the goals and objectives as outlined on the slide. Uh, just understanding that, you know, by dialing back. The prescription, um, it does create more discretionary. Type criteria, um, not as much as it is currently. We, we think it's an improvement. But that does lower the level of predictability than, than we had before. But. We also understand that when you, if you have criteria that are, you know, more rigid. Uh, when you have more of that prescription, there would be more design uniformity in the city. And we understand that that's not. Something that, um, the community necessarily wants either. So. We feel like it does meet the objectives of the project. We do feel that the ordinance strikes a balance. Uh, that's consistent with the goals and objectives of the project. Uh, next slide, please. So as we outlined in the memo, we, we feel that the, the updated criteria would be an improvement. Uh, it would give, um. Applicants and designers and the community, uh, more guidance as to how to. Design a project that meets city goals. So. The criteria would be consistent with the comp plan, its policies and any adopted plans. It does move more in the direction of sustainability and getting more diverse housing types, uh, specifying it more, uh, clearly. Um, enhance site design, ensuring human scale building design, be more specific about what that means. Uh, as well as being more clear about, you know, buildings that are over the height limit or over FAR that they would have. Community benefit requirements for affordable housing, but also have additional design requirements. Um, as specified in the goals and objectives. Um, so we, we believe, uh, that it's met. So key issue number two on the next slide, please. So does planning board recommend any modifications to pass along with its recommendation to city council? So we certainly. Um, are open to any suggestions that the board has tonight. Um, in uh, the memo, we just basically said that we are recommending that uh, planning board recommend approval of the ordinance. Uh, because it more clearly applies city policies. Um, it's significantly more descriptive, making expected design quality baseline very clear. Um, so that projects will be on better footing when they come in the door. Um, there are. You know, there's more language that really is very. Explicit about how to get good design, but there is more flexibility and simplicity in this particular version. Um, of the ordinance. And also again, uh, we are accomplishing city goals for those projects, particularly that go over heightened. And floor area, um, on addressing city policies. So, um, next slide, please. So based on this uh, analysis, this discussion, uh, we are recommending that, uh, planning board recommends to city council. Approval of the ordinance eighty-five fifteen, uh, meeting the goals and objectives of the project. Uh, next slide, please. We, we've provided. Uh, motion language, uh, for the board if the board was so inclined. Uh, next slide, please. I just wanted to touch on, uh, next steps before I conclude. So if, um. The pro- if the ordinance moves forward, we do have. Um, reviews with the city council, uh, scheduled. So January nineteenth. Is tentatively scheduled. It would be first reading, so there'd be no public hearing. And then second reading before the city council would be on February second, uh, where there would be a. A public hearing. If the city council were to adopt the updated site review criteria, we've set. The effective date for July first, uh, of twenty twenty-three, just to give. Applicants and designers, everything time to, um. Implement these criteria in their projects as they design them. We don't want to just drop it on people. Or they're probably designing their projects according to the current. Criteria. And obviously, you know, we don't expect that the ordinance will be perfect. This is like something that we have to work on over time. Uh, but I think as we move forward, we, we, we're going to want to hear the feedback from applicants and the board as. The criteria are implemented about where there can be, um, some improvements in the future if something's not working quite, quite well. But we have been. Combing through this for a long time and we think we have a, a good package before the board tonight. So, uh, next slide. So that concludes the presentation. Uh, any other questions?
Okay, thanks. Open it up to the board for questions. Laura.
Thank you. So I, I think most of my questions probably are better addressed as we go through section by section. Um, in the, to answer your second question, um. One question I do have though is, do you expect if this ordinance passes in February, that you might get very many site review applications in April and. May and June before the new criteria take effect? Like, will, will there be a period of time where we're still using? The old site review criteria. Do you expect many projects to try to get in under the wire, under the old criteria? Or how do you see that playing out?
Well, I mean, I, I think that that's pretty typical when a, when an ordinance gets adopted that might make things a little bit tighter. Uh, we do see. Uh, some folks that try to get in under the current criteria if they. You know, don't want to have to like meet certain requirements. That's not unusual. As far as the scope of that, I mean. Uh, every year is different, but the, the number of site review applications is typically. Around like twelve to fifteen a year. So I wouldn't think it's a huge number. Of applications would come in. I, I think it would be, you know, a per- a smaller percentage of that.
That. Okay, I guess, I guess the reason why it's on my mind is having been a, a new planning board member as of last April and trying to like. Get my feet under me with regard to site review. I'm feeling very empathetic for whoever our new board member is going to be that comes on board in April. Has to learn one set of site review criteria and then turn around and learn a new set. So. I think maybe all of us will need to be a little patient and give a little extra care to that person. But I do agree that giving the applicants time to. Um, you know, figure out if they want to go under the old criteria or the new criteria and adjust, adjust to the new criteria. Is of obviously the most important, um, consideration there.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Carl, um, very nice job. Thank you very much. Um, I do have questions. Um. Uh, I'll start with, um. The uh, language that you came up with for what applies in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. On page ninety-eight, I found that. Really so much more complex and complicated than perhaps necessary. And I'm. Guess I'm trying to understand what exactly. You were trying to accomplish with a, um, like. Eighty-word sentence with lots of semicolons. I just, it was very confusing to me.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the intent, and this is. Kind of after we had a discussion with city council as well. Kind of after we had a discussion with city council as well. I mean, I think they shared the concern with the planning board that. The prior version was too limiting um by not allowing. Um all BVCP policies to apply. So their guidance was basically, you know, let's apply. All the policies that relate to the built environment and to to development review. So that. The qualifiers of that paragraph are really just to kind of guide. How to apply policies to a project. So if there's a specific policy that is not aimed at. You know, a development project, it it couldn't necessarily be denied based on that. Particular policy that might be aimed at guiding a different department to do something about. An environmental matter or something. We're just trying to keep it focused as to how they should be used.
Okay, so I am, when we get to, I'm gonna suggest an alternative that's much simpler. Um. Uh because I, what worries me is that this is all done under community benefit. Code review, except that the built environment does not include. Community benefit components that are incorporated into the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So. Um I feel like what you've proposed is slightly. Um missing um. Some of the purpose of this of this plan. Um I I do have a second question. Mark, do you mind if I ask my second question since you were next up? Go ahead. Was that a go ahead?
Yes, go ahead, but I I am going to build on your first question.
Then go ahead, then go ahead and I'll come back to my second question.
Well, so I I I so appreciate you pointing out. Uh the paragraph which would be H one A on page ninety-eight. Because I had a a similar um. Up on page eighty-six, which is under the general purpose of site review. And and I struggled with this, the under um. Nine dash two dash fourteen A one. While acknowledging the BBCP goals and policies are not prioritized. And no project is expected to satisfy any one BBC policy. Or set of policies. So if we're not. I- it's the wording to me could be interpreted as you don't even have to satisfy one. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, to me, it's an awkward wording that. I I don't understand exactly what you're saying there and that in that and and I'm big on. General purposes and general statements, and I don't understand that one. So that's my input there and I I don't know if you can address it now or if Sarah's wording. Proposed wording of that paragraph farther down on page ninety-eight would provide a basis. Or changing uh the area I I'm I have a concern about.
Can I suggest that we we hold this kind of thing for when we're going through section by section? Because more of us may want to weigh in on these rather than treating it as a question to staff. We might want to ask Carl to clarify what does this mean and then work on it together all kind of as a piece as we go through section by section. Does that work as a process?
I I think that's a a good suggestion. So let's follow that. ML.
Uh um John, I was just looking for clarity around that. I thought we were originally just gonna talk about the. Big picture on the key issues and then get into the details. Um I think we have to hold ourselves to that process. Otherwise. All chaos is gonna erupt here. This is a long, complicated document, so I'll appreciate um. Us sticking to that uh process. Thank you.
Thank you, ML, and uh I I'm grateful for any discipline that gets injected into the process, so. Okay, Sarah, you had another question.
This is another broad question. Um. The open space reductions, um I think I have the correct page eighty-seven. It's nine dash two dash fourteen A seven. Um provi- uh provide high quality open space that provides. I think it's page eighty-seven. Actually, hold on a second. This is where I got a little confused. Um. No, it's not page eighty-seven. I don't know what page it is. It's nine dash two dash fourteen. Oh wait, maybe it's. Sorry, this is what I need. I got super confused. I was running back and forth. But we, it says somewhere in here. Um providing high quality open space that provides additional relief to additional height and intensity. But then later on in nine dash two fourteen H six. Land use intensity, letter A, small b, numbers one, two. Um it's talking about reducing open, the opportunity to reduce open space by between fifteen and twenty-five percent. And I'm just kind of trying to understand how. High quality open space that provides additional relief and a reduction in required open space. How those two things um move us in the same direction. Those seem like they're incompatible. So I just sort of Carl would love your. Your thoughts on on that. What, what, Carl? I lost you. Carl, we lost you.
I wonder if we've lost Carl here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, okay.
Well, now we, now we can't hear you. Sorry.
Carl, turn your video off and see if that helps.
It is.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, but I'm again going.
Interesting. Carl, you may also want to make sure you have PowerPoint closed. For some reason, that can slow um zoom down also if you even have it open.
Um while we're waiting, Sarah, your first quote, I believe, is on page eighty-seven of the packet. And it's number seven in the middle of the page about community benefit and enhanced building and site design for taller, larger buildings.
Yes.
And there's that quote about high quality open space.
Then did have the right reference. Sorry, there it's it's, there's just a lot of numbers. So thank you very much.
Sure. And what was your second quote? I can um try to find it.
That one I, that one I know. That's nine dash two dash fourteen H six.
On what page?
A small letter B, numbers one and two, and it's uh the land use intensity and it's on page one oh nine.
Page one oh nine. So we're looking at pages eighty-seven and page one oh nine.
Carl, are you there? Carl.
So while we're waiting for Carl, I I I wanna, I I need um a refresher maybe on, we are. Asking questions of staff that are large and general, but not.
Right, I'm trying to, yeah, yes, that's correct. And what I'm just trying to understand is. There seem to be, these are big two con- two what seem to be conflicting uh. Purposes. And it may be that one is for a very specific, very specific zone or for a very specific types of building and I just misunderstood. So I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Yeah, no, I I'm 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 not, I'm not struggling with you doing it. It's it's funny because any question I have. Actually addresses very large issues. It's a, it's it's, so I was just trying to. Understand what we as a. Board are doing now versus what we're going to do in a little bit. If someone wants to help me understand that.
Okay, the, I mean, this is a big picture in that it. Seems like there's conflicts between two separate sections. Uh that we'll discuss later, and that's why it seems appropriate now to address that.
And Carl, see and hear me right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I got booted off. I apologize. Zoom and I are not getting along this evening. Carl, the other thing you may try is turning off your blurred background. That can slow your camera down too. Okay?
And if I can chime in while we're taking a quick break here, just a reminder that in addition to referencing the. Ordinance page number, you can refer to a line number and that would avoid you, you know, having to get to. Section numbers and all that type of thing, which can be cumbersome. So. You know, for example, page eighty-six, uh line twenty-three.
Yeah, I'll do that next time. This time I only did pages and um code references. Next time I'll do line references. My apologies.
Sarah, I can try to address your your question now, five minutes later. There, um I I think your question was in regard to the open space reduction criterion for the DTBMS and MU three zone. Is that correct?
Uh I uh let me, I I don't know what exact, I think it it seemed to apply to a number of different zones.
Yeah.
Um it wasn't the DT zone because I did understand why you wanted to reduce. Open space requirements because it makes for odd buildings in a very high density. But um. My, this was, I think it was about buildings that are like thirty thousand feet or larger or additions that are thirty thousand feet or larger and they get to have this. Um they're, you're proposing a reduced open space. If it, i- i- it just seemed like um it just didn't. I didn't see how it meshed with providing high quality open space. So I'm just trying to understand. That these two different um directions.
Yeah, I'm. I don't know that they're out of sync. I I think there are certain scenarios where it makes sense to allow for a reduction of open space in more urban. Zones um where it where it might. Be out of context with the surroundings. I I think if you're talking about the courtyard standards for like larger buildings. That only applies if the site is one acre or larger. Um so I think. I think we'd, again, it's like all these criteria have to be. You know, considered on balance. So there might be a smaller project where this open space. You know, reduction makes sense as long as they meet the other criteria. But for a larger scales property or project that's like a block long over an acre. You know, it probably makes more sense to have that courtyard open space to break up the massing of the building.
Mm-hmm. It, so it it was um in the, in in this section on land use intensity and it's small letter B. And it's the BR two zone, which I think is the Boulder, the where the where the Twenty-Eighth Street Mall is, right?
Yeah.
And it's a reduction in open space i- in developments that have a mix of residential and non-residential uses.
Yeah, this is actually existing language.
Okay.
In in the code, um we actually use this section in the Gun Barrel Center. Project. Um so we we were just tweaking this language. We we weren't really trying to change it holistically.
Okay, that I appreciate the clarification. Exactly why I asked. Thank you.
Yep.
Other, I have a a general question also, and it pertains to the use of Boulder Valley. Comp plan uh input, and that is. That I know that this has been an issue for a long time with uh lots of uh project applicants and so on. But are there actually any examples in recent history of site reviews? Of projects failing site, failing to move ahead from site review based on Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Policies that were cited as the reason why it did not get approved.
In my recollection, and I I might defer to Charles, but I I I've seen projects where it's been cited, but not the primary cause. I I think I've seen it as the primary cause for more of a legislative action, like an annexation. Uh but I can't think of any specific site review developments. I don't know, Charles, if you.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's well said. Um it always is um. Part of the conversation, but you know, the conversation is also about striking a balance. So.
Right, I mean. We'll, we'll talk about this in more detail, but I just want to make it clear that in in my. In my history with planning board of of eight years now, I'm not aware of a single project. Where Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies have been the cause of. A site review failing to get approval. You know, there have been other ones that didn't move ahead. But not with Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So I just have to say that I wonder to what degree this is a. A straw horse, but we'll get to that discussion later. Thank you. Um, okay, any other? Questions for staff? All right, I think then uh. Let's see. Do we want to take a five-minute break before we dive into our? Just let, let's talk about the first question and then we'll take a break and move ahead with uh with our detailed comments. Uh on the second.
Uh John, at 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 what point do we do the public hearing?
Right, that's.
Public hearing, I almost forgot about that. Let's do that now.
And and then take a break after the public hearing?
Yeah, let's do that. I I apologize. I forgot what what we were doing here. Okay. Vivian, would you like to take charge?
Yeah.
You're muted, Vivian.
Can you hear me now? It says I'm.
Yes.
Okay, strange. Um so I was just saying, this is the time when the members of the public here with us tonight, there's just three. Can raise their hands and I would call on you sequentially. To provide your comments for three minutes. No hands so far. Okay. Um Lynn Segal, you have three minutes and I just asked Devin to uh please show the timer on the screen. Bear with us, Lynn. We're just getting the timer up. Okay, go ahead.
Generally, it sounds like pretty good. Revisions to site review. Um. There should be. Plenty of open space because the higher you go, the more you need. Um. But what I think really needs to be done here in Boulder. Is something about affordability. Because that improves the quality of life here a lot and. Community benefit and pitched roofs and and such. Looks good, but. When. Things like I was talking about, the third story and the fourth story that actually makes it fifty percent onsite, fifty percent offsite. Those things aren't included in these kind of. Um site review changes, but they need to be. And. I have no idea how that change happened. But I know that that sounds real sneaky to me, that a fourth floor went up. And then, oh, fifty percent is onsite and isn't that a panacea? And no, it's not. In the case of Papelios. There's a private swimming pool that nobody else can go swimming in. And I don't think that we need. More. Wealth disparity in this community. And I don't like the feeling that now our homeless shelter, which is basically the library, is closed. And. I don't like the feeling that. BHP. People are complaining about what it's like to live in in the projects in Boulder. And I don't like to think about how. We're doing all of this affordable housing. And no one's seeming to mention that. It's not all that great to live in those projects. And that they are discriminating compared to the Peloton across the street. And. That things like true has happened. That that shouldn't be able to happen. Those affect quality of life and community benefit. Far more than these site review changes. And morally, those really stand out to me. And the benefit that opportunity zone types, you know. Federal people that can come in and benefit off of us and then leave. That's not. That's not a positive thing for Boulder. So. I'd just like to see some changes there. And don't just believe that having more height. Is in increasing opportunity for people. It's not. It's making things more difficult. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. There's a few extra seconds because we were a little bit slow on the timer. Thanks a lot. Um anybody else from the public? Please raise your hand if you'd like to to be called on. Looks like no other hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take a break. for five minutes. See you at uh seven forty one. Okay. Uh I think most of us are back now. Let's see.
Do we have Sarah and Lisa?
Look at him a minute.
Looks like Sarah might have dropped off. She might need to be readmitted. Oh, no, she's still here. I just don't see her on screen.
Yeah, I think I think she's
There she is.
She's just um not sitting at the desk yet.
Right.
Uh, okay. Thank you, Brad. Brad, you are full of helpful tips tonight. Really appreciate that line number. I'm like, oh, yeah, you could totally refer to those.
Okay, yeah. All right. Let's see, and let's see, is Lisa likely to show up again? She she has some kid things that she's dealing with. I think we can start our discussion. Um okay. So our first assignment right now is to uh let let each other know how we feel about the first staff question, which is uh the question of whether the object I I have an old computer that's that's not working well, so I can't read it out. Maybe Sarah, can you read out the the specific staff question?
Yes, the first question is, does planning board find that the revised ordinance addresses prior concerns and meets the objectives of the project?
ML.
Can can we get the objectives put up on the screen? I think Carl had them in a couple of places in the
Now or or
I can pull that up one quick second here.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Are you seeing that? Okay?
It's coming. Okay, here we go.
Awesome.
It can you put the um objectives and goals on the on the screen?
Oh, gotcha. Yep.
Thanks.
And whoop. And just so you know, we broke those two questions. It was in the packet. It was listed as one key issue. We broke it into two.
And uh just so you're aware, Sarah has made a very nice spreadsheet, so we can keep track of everyone's comments and have some coherent uh conclusion at the end.
Um, I can go ahead and give my uh answer to that first question while we're waiting, if if you'd like, while Devin's pulling up the goals.
Okay, let's uh move ahead expeditiously here. Yeah.
So my answer is, I think that yes, I think uh uh I'm extremely impressed with how staff has taken diverse input from planning board, city council, the site review committee and DAB um and come back with these changes. You are very creative in finding ways to try to merge all of that input. I didn't know how you were going to do it, but I think you've been very successful. So um I do think that it meets the project goals and objectives, as I agree with staff's analysis on that point. I'd also like to point out that um, you know, when we last talked about this item, we had a very long public hearing and we had a lot of people in the design and architecture and um development community that came and testified with their concerns. And the fact that they are not here tonight to testify to me uh says that they uh don't have those concerns anymore, or at least not enough that would motivate them to come out to a meeting like this. They also showed up in force at city council. And again, the fact that they're not here to me um is good evidence that the uh revised site review criteria, at least um are satisfactory to the development community. Um, and I think I look back at my comments from the last planning board meeting and I felt that they were uh for the most part satisfactorily addressed. I do have some detailed comments that I'll get to in part two, but overall, I'm a big thumbs up. Yes, I think that staff has done a great job here at meeting the um previous input and the goals and objectives.
Thank you. Sharon.
Um, okay, so mostly, I think mostly the um objectives have been met. Um, I am uh I I also have some uh small language and uh those types of changes in our second for our second question. Um, but I am really concerned about the BVCP language that you have in there. Um, and it I think that in fact, that language does not meet the objectives, which includes identifying incentives to address community, economic, social and environmental objectives. I don't know how we can do that as a planning board if we're only evaluating using the built environment, goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So if we change that, I will, if we can find a agreed upon simpler language that encompasses more of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, I I would, my answer ultimately will be yes.
Thank you. ML.
Um, thank you, John. I um I have to say that um this is the the project that I was not looking forward to reviewing um given what we saw back in, what was that, May? Uh, but my gosh, staff has done a tremendous job of, I think, recognizing the gist of what people were saying, which is, you know, don't don't make it more complicated. Don't make it harder. And let's try to get what we want out of our built environment in a um more uh direct and efficient manner. I think that um on on the whole, these goals and objectives um are being addressed with this version of the um site review update criteria. I have fifteen very specific questions, which I'm not going to speak about right this minute, but so there are uh considerations that I think need to be brought to the table around that. But as in a broad scope, I I do believe the staff has done a a pretty amazing job of um bringing these goals and objectives um into a manageable um site review update.
Okay. Let's see, Lisa.
Yeah, very much the same. So I won't speak at length, and I think we'll be getting more in depth later. Um, but yeah, overall, I think staff did an incredible job um of taking the feedback from community members um and from planning board and probably internal discussions you all had with each other. Um, and I do think it meets the goals and objectives uh overall. And you know, I might have more specific things to say later, but um yeah, excellent work and and I appreciate all the effort that must have gone into it.
Okay, Mark.
So concurring um with everything is that's been said so far, especially about synthesizing uh disparate uh public input. Um, I think that uh you know, staff has done a great job. The the this the piece I struggle with is in that first goal, it says identify incentives to address community, economic, social, environmental objectives. So we do as a community have these objectives and it while the site review threshold table on uh page eighty nine table two two, the part I struggle with is that not only uh is site review is a is a rigorous process. It's an expensive process. And uh a lot of that table in the MU and RH zones put the focus on number of units versus the size of units or square footage. And one of our uh one of our goals is to have um more housing for more people and less housing of less less very large housing for fewer people. That table has really gone unaddressed as far as I can tell and still puts an incentive to build fewer, larger units versus um more smaller units. If you look at it in the context of will I have to go through site review or not? So outside of that, that that particular table and what I find the incentives to build big units, uh I concur that the that the uh new criteria on the whole is really great.
Okay. Very good. Let's see, we haven't heard anything from George yet. Do you have any thoughts on this? George, you're muted.
You don't appear to be muted on Zoom. It must be your computer. He's giving two thumbs up to George is that two thumbs up to you think it overall meets the goals and objectives and did a good job answering the cr- criticisms. Okay. Looks like a yes.
All right, we'll have to do sign language. All right, well, I I concur with my colleagues. I think uh staff has done a a great job on with a very difficult assignment. And uh congratulations. I I think this is nice. I I do have some concerns that we'll address in the next phase of this uh meeting, but uh dealing dealing primarily with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan consideration as as I mentioned previously and uh also with the consequences of changes in the open space requirements. But beyond that, I think the objectives have been nicely met. So congratulations. Okay. Um, so uh I think now what we'll do is move into the second phase, the the second question that we have been asked, and that is to learn how we would modify and improve what staff has come up with. Uh, and there I think the the best way to do it is to go through on a on a section by section basis. And uh there if if you like what staff has done, no need to say anything except stick your thumb up. But if you disagree or have a uh material improvement to staff's suggestion, this will be the time when you should uh should make that known. So uh uh I hope that's clear. Um, and the reason I I lay it out like that is to keep us moving ahead as quickly as possible. So, ML.
Thank you, John. Um, I actually have a very direct question. Um, and and it's it's the staff. It's very specific. I'm looking at the uh first paragraph, development review action. Uh
Here can you say
Number twelve.
Which which
Are you there, Carl?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, of the ordinance of of the ordinance, it's line Yes, of the ordinance, of, of the ordinance, it's line twelve.
It's page eighty-four in the packet. Could we get it up on the screen, Devin? Could you go to page eighty-four in the packet and we'll go through? The ordinance section by section. And Sarah, are you, did I hear that you're taking notes with a table that you have for whatever our input is? Okay, thank you so much.
Different computer, so hopefully my abilities are improved.
Yes, so I just have a very straightforward question, we're, and we're putting this into an ordinance, so I, I just want to be clear. Um, uh, line number twelve, it says that. The completeness determination will be made within five days after the submission. I mean, I can't get an ADU completeness verification for two to three weeks. So, does it make sense to put that in? Is that what happens? Is that real?
I mean, this is existing language um in the code. And I think that some, the determination about completeness is largely looked at by. Uh, our project specialists at the counter. So there are instances where. Applications are considered incomplete within those five days of submission. By the project specialist, and then once they, they deem it complete, there will be a, another review by a case manager once it's assigned. If there's anything missing, we usually work with the applicant to get that uh submitted.
So are you saying yes, that is probable and possible? It should stay?
I mean, it, it is, it is our practice. Uh, again, like uh, applications come in, our project specialists will do that initial review. Uh, for completeness, and we have standard responses if something's missing. Um, and that's usually before it's assigned to any case managers.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark.
Okay, um, uh, well, and maybe I'm, I'm, I'm jumping down to the uh not page. Eighty-six, uh, bottom of page eighty-six, line twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mark, can we just, can we just do it by like section by section, like development review action? Does anybody else have? Comments on development review action nine dash two dash seven?
I recommend that we let John manage the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just worried that people will jump in with whatever their next item is, rather than going sort of page by page or section by section, but I, I will defer to John. That's a great suggestion, Sarah.
Okay, I, I, thank you, and I, I think that's uh, that Laura's uh. Thoughts are reasonable too, so, but if, if anyone has a comment on uh, on page. And I have eighty-four or eighty-five before we get to Mark's comment on page eighty-six, now's the time to say it. Okay, Mark, go ahead on eighty-six.
Okay, all right. Again, I, I thought I might be jumping ahead. So uh, going back to my question that I posed earlier. I'm big on clear general statements that set a direction and I. Can't quite parse particularly the last sentence. There was actually all one kind of sentence, but. The last two lines. So if they, I don't know if staff, uh, Carl can. Tell me in some simpler words what that's saying. I get confused with uh, no project. So zero, no project is expected to satisfy. Any one BBC policy or set of policies.
I, I think the intent of this statement was that the way it's stated in the, in the criteria now is that the. Policies are applied to projects on balance. So we were trying to find a better way to say on balance. Um, there, you know, the policies aren't prioritized and we don't want. A project to be um impacted unequally to another project based on a. Applying a particular policy. So we were just trying to set the stage for how it should be used.
So if it said, no project is expected to satisfy all BBC policies simultaneously. Or just all BBC policies. That would say that you're expected to satisfy some of them, a bunch of them, but. When you, when you use the word one in there, it's kind of like, wait, I don't really have to satisfy. Any of them, or that, I, I, I just find it confusing and I would suggest different wording there. Unless they're gonna tell me that I'm, I'm reading it wrong.
If I may uh, jump in, uh, the language. I, I totally see point, Mark, and I wonder if it could be addressed by changing it to said it satisfies any one particular BBC policy or sets. Of policies. I think that's what our intent was and the language. And maybe we didn't translate it accurately, actually comes out of the comp plan itself. The comp plan states the policies are not prioritized and no one policy. Or set of policies must be satisfied by any action ordinance regulation, development review or program. So I think that statement says. There's not a particular policy that a, a one development has to meet.
Right.
There has to be a meeting of the, on, on balance. Um, but i- if it's just one, then a project shouldn't be denied based on that.
Great. I guess I would say, one, I like the, the term on balance. And two, the other thing you might say is no project can be rejected. Because it failed to satisfy any one BBC policy, so. I, 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 I don't know if that, I gotta think about that, but anyway, it seems like that might be a way you do, we couldn't just. Say gee, this doesn't satisfy this one, i- it fulfills ninety other policies, it fails on. Number ninety-one, hence we're going to reject it. Anyway, I still find it troublesome. That, that's my, that's my comment there.
Uh, I think Hella was, I think Hella was trying to respond to Mark and Hella, you're breaking up a little bit. I don't know if you want to turn off your video, maybe.
Yeah, let me do that. Well, hopefully this helps a little bit. Yeah, I was just gonna follow up. To Mark's comment. Um. To know.
Hella, you're still breaking up and I actually think it sounds like a mic issue. Um, it might be that it's like. Something or not plugged in all the way.
I'm gonna try to turn off my headset and see if that.
We actually hear you fine now. Whatever you did, you're, you're coming through.
How's this? Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Um, yeah, I guess I, I was just trying to say if, and, and I think you're all just commenting right now, but um. Just the discussion, I think, makes it clear that there's room for improvement in that language to make, you know what it means. Um, it'd be good to understand. What you guys wanted to re- to read. Um, can't deny it based on one policy or. You know, turning it the other way around, but I, I would encourage you to elaborate on that as a, as a group, so we know where all of you are at. On that.
So, I, I guess, as I keep rereading it.
Mark, I, I think that there is language elsewhere in the memo that is more clear and more in line with what Hella just read out of the BVCP. Can I suggest that?
Sure.
And, and uh, this is not necessarily the right answer, but it is a potential answer, is that later in the memo on page ninety-nine. Um, the first line, it says. Basically the same language that Hella read out of the BVCP. No policy and goal or set of policy goals must be satisfied by any one development. Project. I feel that that is more clear than the way they had it written in the summary at the beginning of the memo. And that actually comes out of like the ordinance language, the, the edits to the ordinance. So I don't, I don't know if that. That feels clear to me. Another way that staff framed it in their memo. They said on page eighty-one, new language clarifies that policies unrelated to development review applications would not be considered. Which is a very strong statement and does not appear anywhere in the ordinance. Um, but. That is also a potential way to frame it, that policies unrelated to development review applications would not be considered in site review. Which I, I, I think I'm hearing from Sarah would raise some flags for Sarah.
Well, they would for me, that's for sure. Uh, and I do like, I, I do, I would, I would think that what you pointed out. On page ninety-nine is, would be a, 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 a big improvement.
I flagged that same thing because I had the same concern that you did.
Sarah.
So the language that I had drafted up was to change uh the, what's on. Uh, line twenty-three on page eighty-six was to change it to. Consistency with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, development projects are consistent with relevant goals and policies of the BVCP. While recognizing that no project can satisfy all BBC put, all BVCP goals and policies, period. Um, rather than saying that doesn't satisfy one, you, you know, instead of. We're, it just, it just, it's a simpler sentence and it gets rid of some of that confusion, confusion. And we all know that you could build any kind of city you want out of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, so um, it is not um. And nothing's, no one ever fulfills or meets all the goals. So it would just be the first sent, the first. Uh, the first uh phrase to the comma and then adding. While recognizing that no project can satisfy all BVCP goals and policies.
I, I, I appreciate that wording. I, um. Yeah, I, I would, I would think that would be fine. So, and, and I guess, question for everyone in staff, by dropping. Is this a section that we drop the use of on the whole?
On balance.
On, on, on balance or on the whole? It is, I, I think I've heard both, but anyway, on balance.
Well, I, I, I do want to point out that, that this is a summary of things that appear later in the ordinance. And there is more specific language on this point uh on page ninety-eight. So. I'm fine with Sarah's rewrite to this summary. I think we're, we're probably going to want to have a deeper conversation when we get to page ninety-eight about what specifically. Is being considered when we think about what are the relevant goals and policies and is it on balance or not? Um, I, I would be fine with Sarah's rewrite to this summary section completely, and then I would like us to continue that conversation when we get to page ninety-eight.
Okay, I see, I'll summarize when I see thumbs up or down. ML has a thumb up, I have a thumb up. Mark has a thumb up. Lisa, I can't see your hands, so I don't know what you think.
Laura has a thumb up.
Okay. Lisa, are you thinking?
Yeah, I, I'm generally in agreement with what other folks are saying. I mean. I think in some ways my. General approach to the BVCP is um. Maybe a bit more pragmatic is how I view it, you know, and, and that is that I think much of what's in there is incredibly important and yet. Ultimately, when it comes to specific site review and so on, we don't use it that much. Um, or as you yourself mentioned, and, and I'm not saying that, that you were mentioning this to, to reach any particular um. Rhetorical end, um, you know, but, but it's usually not the reason why we reject something or, or embrace something, so. Um, I, my bias tends to be towards simplification. Um. Both for us and for future council members and for staff, uh, but that doesn't mean that I'm not um very sympathetic to much of what's in the BVCP. I just. I might, might, yeah, I tend toward a more pragmatic, simpler approach.
So is that a thumbs up for Sarah's suggestion? Good. And let's see, George is here. I haven't uh heard from him.
He also has a thumb up.
Okay, I'm clicking along people's thumbs there. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send this change to uh Devon and Carl, so that we don't lose it as we go forward.
Okay, and as Laura indicated, we'll get to talk more about this at the, at a later stage here. Okay.
Hey, John, I have something else on this page before we scroll off.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a small point, but I do, I did hear people. When we had the previous conversation about site review, specifically point to the language that said the purpose of site review is ABC. And the way the current language is written, we have a very simple sentence that says the purpose is ABC, and then it's elaborated on. With the rewrite, if I'm reading this correctly, we basically have the purpose of site review is, and then there are eight separate clauses. In a very long paragraph. And I would like to simplify that. And what I would suggest, I'm just gonna go ahead and put my suggestion out there. I think that three of those things are the main purpose of site review and the other things are subsidiary. And so I would rewrite that as, using the language that's there, I'm not proposing changing any words, but just how they are arranged. I would say something like, the purpose of site review is to allow flexibility in design, to promote the most appropriate use of land. To improve project design and to implement the goals and policies of the BVCP and other adopted plans of the community. That's my understanding of what we're trying to do. We're giving people some flexibility in design, so that we make sure the land is used appropriately. The projects are good and improve design, and we're implementing the BVCP. All of those other clauses like. Encourage innovation in land use, improve the character and quality of new development, that's fleshing out to me. The simple purpose of site review. So I'm suggesting that rather than having eight things. A sentence with eight different clauses be the purpose of site review that we simplify. And I can send that language to Devon if that's helpful.
Okay, Sarah.
Uh, so I, I'm not ready to respond to Laura's suggestion. I, I would be hesitant to. Remove. Most of these descriptors, um, because site review isn't actually simple. As you know, it's quite complicated and we are dealing with multiple different facets of development from. The broad sense of planning and to the very specifics of a particular application, so I wouldn't want to. Limit it so completely that it's um, just about the building that's in front of us, because it's, it's not. Um, I, uh, we could, why don't we wrap up Laura's discussion and then I have something else I wanted to raise in this section.
Okay, any other thoughts on Laura's suggestion?
I'm supportive.
Okay.
I have thoughts.
Oh, go ahead, ML.
Um, I understand what Laura is, is, is saying, but I think that what the staff has done here. Is they have created kind of this overarching um identifier. That calls out here the pieces that we're going to talk about, and then they nest underneath that all the specifics of it. I think that there is a structure here that is important to, to retain because. The way the rest of um, this section plays out. Has, has to do with referring back to. All of these, I would just say eight items that are listed here under purpose. So I would be hesitant to um. Diminish the comprehensive nature of that, of that uh paragraph. Paragraph sentence. And, so I guess I'd be more, more in line with what Sarah was saying that. I don't think we need to wordsmith this one. I think this one is a structure that is being set up for all of the stuff that follows.
If I can just respond to that, I completely understand your point. I, I just. My point is that if somebody asks you, what is the purpose of site review, would you say? The purpose of site review is to allow flexibility in design, to encourage innovation in land use development, to promote the most appropriate use of land, to improve the character and quality of new development. To facilitate the adequate and economical provision of streetlights and utilities, to streets and utilities and so on and so forth for all of those eight clauses. Like it just doesn't. That it's not a pithy sentence of what site review is that would help somebody understand it. Maybe that's not important in this ordinance. To be able to encapsulate what is it so that a person understands it, but. Maybe that's not important in this ordinance to be able to encapsulate what is it so that a person understands it, but
My suggestion is just to point that out to staff and let them come, let them do the wordsmithing with our, with your comments, which I, I agree with, but I don't think it's appropriate for us right tonight to, to, to try and get into that detail.
That works for me.
Any other comments on that issue? Okay, Sarah, you said you had another.
Yeah, so I was just disappointed that we lost some of the references to pedestrian in, in A, we lost a reference to pedestrians and human scaled, and there's never been a reference to cyclists. And I just wonder if there is a way, and I'm not going to, I won't wordsmith, but I'm just going to urge staff to think about whether it makes sense to put in a clause that does reference human beings who are in this built environment. Because that is part of the planning process as well. And the removal from this discussion seems to me to be an unfortunate decision. And it may, I'm sure it was done for editing purposes and not because planners don't care about people, because I know they do. But I just do suggest that we put people back in there somehow.
Okay, shall we just do thumbs up or down on Sarah's idea? I like it. Can't see, okay, looks like there's a majority of thumbs here. So I can't see George's, so.
I'm, I'm thumbs upping. I think I got my mic to work now too.
Okay, good. Yeah, we hear you. That's good. All right. Let's move on.
Oh, I think, I think we're scrolling too much.
So I, I have a small item that I well, well, just in a comment on Sarah's part, Sarah's and Laura's work both. It seems like that the seven numbers one through seven directly below the long paragraph are kind of fleshing out everything that we've both found missing and confusing earlier. So maybe that's a good thing. But in par, in number seven, with lines seventeen and eighteen on page eighty-seven, the second to the last line, it was one between lines seventeen and eighteen reads provide high-quality open space that provides relief to additional height and intensity. Is that supposed to be relief or am I just not understanding a, a sentence?
No, that, that's correct. There, there's actually a couple little errors in number seven that we've already identified. So thank you.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if I was like, I'm not familiar with that. Okay, that was it on that page. Thank you.
So I have a couple in number seven and I have one in number two. So in number seven, it talks about buildings that are built above the zoning district height limits. And I just, I always have a bee in my bonnet about people who are going to misunderstand and think that we are somehow violating the city's height limit. And so I would just encourage staff whenever we talk about going above height limits to talk about it in terms of going above by right or conditional height limits, but still staying within the city's charter height limit. I put that out there for your consideration. It's not make or break for me, but it always raises my red flag of how are people going to misunderstand this? And I know that the typical user of site review won't, but somebody might. And then also in number seven, there's language about views, I believe. So it's in line seventeen, preserve and take advantage of prominent views from the sites and adjacent public spaces. I would like to make that language match what is later in the ordinance where it talks about prominent views from public spaces and common areas within the project. It's not just anywhere on the site, it's the common areas on the site. So I want to, I would like to, since this is a summary of what comes later, just make sure that that matches. And then my last thing in number seven is that it talks about providing relief to the additional height and intensity of the project, which I think is right. And then it says, and surrounding area. And it is not my understanding that a project is required to provide relief from intensity in the surrounding area, especially if we have found that it is compatible with the surrounding area. So I would just suggest a small tweak there and say that the project benefits the surrounding area rather than having it run into providing relief from the height and intensity of the project and surrounding area. So I would just say benefits the surrounding area. Those are my things in number seven. I do have some stuff in number two, but if anybody wanted to respond to what I said in seven, maybe we should make space for that.
Go ahead, ML.
Um, well, are we, number two is before number seven. My comments are on six and seven. So do we want to go up to two and kind of do it sequentially?
Well, then.
John?
Let's keep in mind what Laura said about seven and go to two then.
I do have a comment about two also, but I'm happy to let ML go or
Two was yours. I have comments on six and seven.
Oh, I see. Okay.
My goodness, okay.
Wait, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, there, I would like to respond to you and I think ML may want to respond to you as well. So since we've skipped over two, three, four, five and six, we'll come, if we can come back to those and let's just wrap up seven.
I'm good with that.
ML, you had your hand up. Do you want to?
I do. Can we, can we scroll to seven again, please? Down one paragraph. There you go. Um, I appreciate that this number seven talks about the community benefits. So that would be line numbers between fifteen and sixteen. Community benefits identified in the BBC beyond the underlying zone. So do you have the BVCP sections that you're referring to there? I mean, I think it's rare that we're seeing specific pointing to, to something specifically in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, and I'm wondering if there is added specificity that you can put in there. Community benefits identified in the BVCP beyond the other.
We typically shy away from specific references to the comp plan. We, we used to reference specific policies in the code, but over time, when there's updates made to the BVCP, those policy numbers often change. And then they're out of sync with the land use code. So we've tried to shy away from, from doing that. We've actually had to make some zoning code updates that removed specific policy references because of that.
So how, so I, I, I have an applicant coming and I'm reading this. And I'm seeing that there are community benefits that are identified in the BVCP. How would I know which community benefits this section is referring to?
I mean, anyone can, you know, take a look at the comp plan and do like a word search, but you can go through section one. There's, there's a policy called enhanced community benefit. So I mean, that's the primary one that we're drawing from here. There's also the annexation policy that's also in section one.
So my, my, I guess the gist of my question is if we're putting a specific pointer, and this looks to me like a specific pointer, maybe it really isn't. Community benefits identified in the BVCP that we should give people the opportunity to find those.
I mean, we could say section one.
I see.
It's, it's for, it's for giving people the information they need to use the criteria. So we don't very often have something as specific as that is the reason I'm pointing that particular one out. So however that would happen, it seems that if we're pointing to something, there should be enough information so that people can actually get there. In other words, get to the part in the BVCP that speaks about community benefits.
ML has some advice for us.
Yeah, with regard to that particular concern, ML, this is the intent section. These are not actually the review criteria. So it just expresses the intent behind the review criteria that they're established later. And we do have more specific criteria on what those community benefits are later in the code. Were we actually implementing those policies of the BVCP that talk about increased community benefit for additional height and density?
Thank you. Thank you for that. That makes, I guess I didn't catch, catch it when I read through the document that it was more specific later on. But thank you. I appreciate that. Because I think that that's kind of one of the things that we were looking to do is make it predictable for the people that are using it so that they know what they're going to be held accountable to. Thank you.
Sarah?
Okay, I'm going to respond to Laura's suggestion about changing the language about, that is specific to buildings that are taller and larger. Given that this is the intent section, I think it's important for applicants to understand that if they are going to propose a taller, bigger building, that they have to be, they have to take some responsibility for prominent views and adjacent public spaces. That seems to me an important intent, intent. That even though they are not responsible for what is going on and what's programmed in those other public spaces, those public spaces likely exist in part or have, may have prominent views and an applicant has to be thoughtful about those. So as an intent statement, I'm actually very comfortable with what the language is here. And as Hella just said, there's more specificity, sorry, later on in the, in the site review and all the tables associated with the site review. So I personally am comfortable with the language as it is.
So, so just to, to clarify, Sarah, because I know there's a lot of detail here. The, the change that I was suggesting was just to make this match what it says later, which is that take advantage of prominent views from common areas on the site and adjacent public spaces. So yes.
But that's specific to a project. This is an intent about what's, what we're going to look for in site review, not specifically for project X, Y, or Z. So that language that's later on is specific. And this is more general. So I think, I think they're complimentary and they serve two different purposes. That would be my take on it.
I think this is about, it says, these buildings are compatible in form and massing with the surrounding area and preserve and take advantage of prominent views from the site and adjacent public areas or adjacent public spaces. I'm just trying to make it match what's later on, what it has later on. So I'll just leave that comment with staff. I, I think it makes sense to make this match what's in the ordinance later. I'm not trying to delete anything or change the intent. I'm just trying to make it match.
Okay. Any other comments on this? I think our, our staff has taken note and they, they can figure out the wordsmithing on this. All right, shall we keep moving?
I think we were going to go back up to number two and then number six and then anything else in this section. I think, I think what happened was that Mark kind of skipped ahead to number seven in this section from one to seven. So there might be some things in the middle that got skipped. I do have a comment on number two.
Okay, let's go with that.
So number two talks about that development projects are consistent with adopted sub-community and area plans and design guidelines of the community. And I just want more clarification on what do we mean by design guidelines of the community? Are we saying city design guidelines? I mean, the community could be the community of architects, the community of developers, the community of the globe. You know, what are the design guidelines and which community are we talking about?
I mean, this was intended to be adopted design guidelines that we apply just like adopted plans, not anything beyond that.
So these are adopted design guidelines of the city of Boulder?
Yes.
Okay, I would just make that clarification. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, any other thoughts on this? All right, let's see. What was the next one? Six? ML?
Good memory, it is six. And this, my, and just Carl, hold this, hold this on, on the path here. I know that, so we're talking about intent here. And more specificity comes later, but on number six, the question I am it is number between ten and eleven, buildings exemplifying high-quality enduring architecture with façades that are simple and human scale. Um, so buildings provide pedestrian interest and are compatible with the character. So I wonder if the sods is the right, is really what you're talking about here, or if you're talking about about the form. Can you unpack that a little bit, exemplifying high quality? So we're looking at human scale building. So we're talking about the streetscape. We're talking about people approaching a building. We're talking about human scale. And that happens. Yeah, I'm, it's not clear.
So you're asking if, if we mean more than just facades, like if it's building massing?
Yeah, because when you think about human scale, that's really the person against the building. It's not the contextual relationship of the form. I guess it's the use of buildings and then reducing it to facades that is kind of
Yeah, I, I think our thinking was that we wanted to focus on facades, you know, like windows, the size of bricks, for instance, you know, the design more that like, and really kind of address the massing and form under seven. Just in terms of like adding to the predictability element. If the massing of every building, even at the, the zoning allowed heights comes under too much scrutiny, that could add to the unpredictable nature of the review. So I think that's why we focused on, on facades.
Right. So you might want to take out that second enduring architecture with facade that are simple and human scale. And then maybe that should say facade provide pedestrian interest that are compatible rather than zooming out the scale again to a, to a building. It, it would just unclear what scale you're talking about here, but you're talking about human scale. So I, I would, I would just rethink whether that should be buildings on the second sentence, or whether you're really still talking about the facades.
Okay, Sarah had some thoughts on this too.
Actually, my thought was back to number three. I'm sorry. I'm just, it's actually a question for Carl about sustainability. And it lead, it will lead to other questions later on. How does site review or how does this process a com, only as a different way, does, does the site review process which now incorporates responding to the carbon reduction goals of the city include the cars that are associated with a building? In, in particular, the parking and opportunities for EV and hybrid hookups? Is, is that counted towards the the carbon emissions
Not generally.
For buildings?
No.
I mean, perhaps Carolyn can help with this, but my, my understanding is that, you know, if, if a applicant is trying to exceed the, to meet that criterion on the ECC, the Energy Conservation Code, there's any number of ways that they could you know, reduce their energy usage by 10%, and that might include EV charging stations, for instance, there's a combination of things that could be applied. Carolyn, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, thanks, Carolyn. Again, I'm Carolyn Neelam. I'm a senior manager in our climate initiatives department. You know, I think in our base code, we try and address making, ensuring that all of our buildings have capacity to support electric vehicle adoption. And so that's a base energy conservation code requirement to include making sure that we have EV charging at every building that has parking as well as EV readiness and EV capable requirements. I think as far as site review, we're trying to really get at some of the other aspects of the carbon footprint, recognizing that these projects typically are more than simply the building that's going in place to, to drive a further reduction to compensate for that. I, it's not necessarily through additional EV charging because that's not necessarily going to be inherent in the EUI. But I think we're planning to address more of that through the base code, including some of the lifecycle carbon things that are going to move into the base code. So certainly happy to answer more questions about that, but just kind of want to balance that. I think what we're really intending is the, as you'll see in the later criterion, is the structure itself and its operational emissions that we're really tackling with that criteria. Not so much the transportation effects. Those are, those are more to do with some of the transportation criteria than our base energy conservation code.
Okay, that's very helpful. I appreciate that.
Mark. You're muted, Mark.
This does raise this kind of general question and, and I should probably just drop it. We go on, but I'll, I'll raise it that how does our energy code and vehicle charging? Are those separate things from our TDM policies, which I've stated in the past are general and we don't have a TDM toolkit, et cetera, but what is staff's plan to kind of make cohesive our TDM policies, which incorporate how people get to and from a site? And the building energy policies and the charging policies? How will that get coordinated? And are we missing an opportunity to do it in the site review criteria? Or should it be done in code and other places?
Such a complex question you ask, Mark. I mean, I, I, I think the fair way to say it is the energy code itself treats a building as a building and it doesn't take it in the context of where it is within a transportation corridor. And it's really our you know, comp plans and, and other tools that we have that really start to guide our transportation networks and, and how people get to those buildings. And so I don't know, I won't comment specifically on where the opportunities in the site review criteria, but just naming that typically those, you know, every building has to have a certain set amount of parking spaces and charging spaces and charging readiness irrespective of where it's located. But it's really how we treat that within the comp plan that, that gets at some of those other aspects about where, you know, where your transportation corridors are, where your public access is. That's how I generally think about it. I look to my planning friends because I'm, I'm a climate person and I don't only, you know, I touch on this, but if anybody has anything to add to that, that's how I tend to think of the, the two coming together. And I think they're both in the site review criteria in the sense that you, you need to really look at the comprehend, you know, the area plans and the comp plans to really think about those criteria coupled with what's going to happen in the building code. But I certainly am not the expert in, in that specific aspect.
Okay, thank, I, it's, we are charged when we, when we do a site review. And maybe we've been doing it wrong, but we certainly are charged with reviewing parking, parking reductions, electrification of parking, charging of bicycles, et cetera. And so and I, I find our current criteria and, and the subsequent down level code to be thin and subjective. And so it leaves a lot of us up to us. So on one hand, that encourages creativity. On the other hand, it, it leaves, leaves developers to be subjected to try to meet our the desires of, of the current planning board. So anyway, it's a conundrum there.
Sarah.
I think you, I wanted to move on. I mean, I want to second Mark's comments. I think it would be very helpful to figure out how to incorporate the, the EV stuff into the energy code as, and then ultimately incorporate into site review. Because I think we want to encourage developers to add more EV stations so that we can encourage, so that more and more people who drive EV cars can actually move into those buildings. But I, if anyone else doesn't have comments about this topic, I do have something I wanted to, and the next in number four, housing diversity. Okay. So I was just going to suggest that we add a phrase at the end of the housing diversity to include. So introducing a variety of housing types, unit sizes and ownership opportunities. So just add and ownership opportunities. We know that we do want to make it possible for folks to be homeowners in Boulder. Not, not everyone needs to be, not everybody wants to be. But since most of what has been built recently is not homeownership opportunities, I just think it's worth adding that as an objective and it certainly is part of, I think it's chapter seven, which is all the housing, housing goals of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. So that's just a suggestion.
Laura. You're muted, Laura.
Sorry, double muted. I, I just would like to ask staff a question about that. And I, well, I appreciate Sarah's intent. My understanding is that this section of the ordinance is basically summarizing or giving a taste of what is to come later. And I don't think that there is anything later about ownership versus rental. And so I would be hesitant to add something here in the summary of intent that is not later reflected in the ordinance language.
That's correct. This purpose section is meant to be a summary of, you know, the different sections of the site review criteria.
Thank you, Carl. I don't object to what Sarah is talking about. I just don't know that this ordinance does that. Even though we do have an overall site review criterion around balance of BBCP policies, there's nothing specifically in this ordinance that people would have to respond to around ownership opportunities. That's more in the affordable housing incentive program, right? I, I'm a little mixed up here.
That's, that's correct. And obviously there's, there's been some changes in state law relative to ownership that our, our friends in, in the housing department are looking at and looking at potential updates to codes to address that.
Okay, any other thoughts on this? All right, let's keep moving. Hey, people need to speak up when they, when we come to a section.
Okay, I, I have a couple.
Laura.
Sorry. So scrolling back up to development review thresholds. I, I have some questions about some stuff that's missing here. So it's not language that staff is proposing. The first is that you know, in the development review thresholds, this is where that in my opinion, kind of wonky section about buildings in industrial zones, if they have two or fewer stories or the height is necessary for manufacturing, testing, or other industrial process or equipment that they can get up to 55 feet. And we struggled with that on a project that came before us briefly earlier this year of why is that an or rather than an and? Because I don't understand why simply having two stories in an industrial zone would make you eligible for a height modification. And I don't know the history behind that. And I know this didn't come up earlier in talking about it, but it is in the site review criteria. And I'm wondering if I can last minute kind of sneak under the wire, a suggestion that we think about changing that or to an and unless there's a really good reason for why a two-story building in an industrial zone should be eligible for a 55 foot height modification regardless of needing tall floors. I, I don't understand it and I would like to change it if it is not, if there's not some logic behind it.
Can you just direct us to where I'm, I'm?
Yes. So in the BBC, or in the current site review criteria, let me just Google for it real quick.
It's, it's section nine, two, 14B, B1E.
Okay.
Or B1. It's one of the letters after one.
It's two, actually. It's little letter I, I. Little Roman numeral two. Let me see if I can find it in the but it, it is in the site review criteria. And it's in the same section about scope or development review threshold. And it's not shown here because it wasn't modified. And I'm suggesting that we take this opportunity and, and fix what seems to me to be a very puzzling thing that doesn't seem to serve us very well. I don't know if we can pull that up on the screen. Carl, do you, are you able to find that and pull it up? And Hella helped us with this when it came before us as a project where they were requesting 55 feet. And they had no particular justification of why they needed extra tall floors to get up to 55 feet. It was only a two-story building, so it qualified for this exemption. Yeah, there it is. It's E, little Roman numeral two. The building is in the industrial, general industrial service or industrial manufacturing zoning district and has two or fewer stories or the height is necessary for a manufacturing, testing, or other industrial process or equipment. I don't understand why that's or the height is necessary for their equipment. I think that should be an and.
I, I would suggest that we ask staff to consider that and come back to us on it. Because I can, I can see the the temptations that that would lead to various developers to to move up to 55 feet. And I, I, I think it would be great to, to get staff to look into that carefully and come back to to planning board on. But I, I have to say, I'm very cautious about making changes like that on the fly right now.
I understand. I understand. I just remember that it, it was bothersome earlier. Yeah.
It's a good point, Laura.
Thank you.
We can certainly look into that.
I'll just recommend that to staff. Is there a good reason why only having two stories in an industrial zone would qualify you for a height modification? All the other ones in here, there's a good reason, like you've got to elevate above the base flood elevation. So you get some extra height and things like that. This one I don't understand. And then the other one that I think is missing, this is one going back to the ordinance that staff gave us that was deleted. And I just have a question of why was on page 88 Roman numeral, little Roman numeral eight, VIII. Why was that stricken that a height modification to allow an expansion of an existing building that exceeds the permitted height requirements? If the height, existing height was approved as part of a planned unit development, site review or height review and the expansion is not within a fourth or fifth story, is it just that that never gets used? Or why was that strict?
To be honest, this, this is new language that I think we wanted to include in here. I might have to defer to, to Hella on that because unless she has objection, I think we do actually want to include that.
Yeah, I think I think that may be a mistake in the ordinance. It is not currently in the code and we were proposing that.
Yeah, I think there's a version control thing that's happening here because it's not currently in the code. I think that's something that wasn't supposed to be stricken through. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll have that in there.
Okay. And, and I didn't have a problem with it. It just basically says this, this building already has a permit to have a certain amount of height. And now they're expanding it to that same, that, you know, they're expanding the floor area that has that same height. I, I didn't see a problem with it. It would still go through site review, but this is one of the allowable conditions.
Yeah, and that's why we developed that, that paragraph. I think it's just, it's an error shown crossed out.
Okay, thank you. Those were my only two items under development review threshold.
Okay, Sarah.
So does anyone else have stuff under development review thresholds or can we skip over the charts? Oh, ML, sorry.
I just have a, a charts. Go over to charts. I have a a question about the minimum size for site review concept review required. Those thresholds um, has development proved that these triggers are valid? Two acres, one acre, et cetera, whatever these minimum sizes. Do we know that they, that these are the right numbers?
I, I think it's all a matter of opinion. I mean, I've worked for the city for many years. In my opinion, I, I feel like these thresholds are appropriate. I feel like the projects that we get in are of a size that I think definitely warrants, you know, planning board review of a concept plan. I don't know that I've ever seen any concept plans or site reviews that I thought probably shouldn't be. I know, I know there's, you know, some that think that we should change these thresholds, you know, to encourage more housing. I understand that and that's something we may do in the future, but but I mean, my sense of, of concept plans and site reviews is that these are appropriate thresholds.
I would agree. I think we're netting the right projects for review. And I do know that when the site review criteria were originally drafted in the nineties, I think there was a lot of attention given to the typology of the different zone districts and the thresholds that were set. So while Carl and I weren't around for any of that work, that's the way that it's always been explained to me. But it does feel to me, even if it's just anecdotally, that we're netting the right projects for the board's review.
Okay, so nothing is, has either been below those that you wish would have gone through a review or something that you captured. Okay, that, that was just my question. Are these still, are these still valid? Thanks.
I'll just simply, I, I made my comments about this table earlier. I'll simply say that while we might be netting the right projects for review, we are not necessarily incentivizing the right projects for construction. So that was, that's my slight counter to that statement.
So just so I understand your, your point, are you saying that those sizes should be increased or decreased?
Well, that, that we're using the wrong criteria. In the sense of we have two acres or 20 dwelling units. So as an example, so again, if if a developer has the it's a disincentive to go through site review. It's expensive and a disincentive. So if a developer is making decisions on the margins of gee, I can build 19 units at 2,000 square feet apiece or 24 units at 1,600 or 32 at 1,200, whatever, whatever the math works out to be. They are incentivized to be able to skip side review and, and not undergo this process by building fewer larger units.
Thanks, Laura.
I want to call acquis on that and say, I think, I think Mark has pointed out something that's very important. I think staff are already dealing with this in the affordable housing program in terms of the, the fees that have to be paid to the affordable housing program that the, the fees that have to be paid to the affordable housing program that are based on unit counts. And Michelle talked about how they're looking at changing that so that it also considers square footage rather than just being purely based on unit counts. And so I guess my suggestion, I do think it's pretty late in the game to be changing something so incredibly significant as this. For this particular go around at the ordinance, but I would suggest to staff that they consider that that language or that logic that holds for how we're incentivizing affordable housing. It also holds for how we incentivize or disincentivize developments in general, because Mark is right, going through a site review is something people would like to avoid. And so if they can do that by constructing larger units, they might. So that might be something to consider for a future update of this ordinance. And I see Carl nodding, so I'm going to stop there and thank you, Carl, for considering.
Yep.
Okay, I I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense. And again, it's something that we should encourage staff to consider and, and review that, that whole approach.
Alright.
Any other? Oh, Sarah, go ahead.
Not, not in the, I'm, I'm, I've moved on in my head to um, page 92, uh, small letter D, application requirements, uh, 17. Page, um, mine, yeah, below, keep going a little bit further down on page 92. Whoever's in charge of the scrolling. Yeah, the, the prairie dogs. Okay, I have a question. So we say in nine dash two dash 14D 17 that um, we have, there you have to have plans for preservation of et cetera, et cetera. But then when we get to prairie dogs, we have a statement of intent. And I'm wondering why we have these two different um, standards? And why not just, because statement of intent? What intention and plan are not the same thing. And I'm just wondering why we don't require a plan for the prairie dog uh, intervention, why we require a statement of intent?
So we coordinated with our, our wildlife specialist in our department on this issue. This particular requirement and the criterion that relates to it has been in the site review for, for many years. Um, we thought through this site review process, it was an opportunity to confer with her whether this was still accurate. And what has happened since this was originally codified is that there's a process for um, like prairie dogs, that's actually specifically stipulated in chapter six, one that wasn't there when this was originally created. So we updated the language to refer to that process that's uh, in chapter six, one.
Okay, and that process is, has, requires a statement of intent?
I think so, yeah, there, there's a whole set
Okay.
Program that they follow for every project that has identified prairie dog. So we just wanted to, to make that clear.
Okay, alright, thank you. I just wasn't sure why there was a difference. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, Sarah, your hand is up.
Oh, sorry. Um, my next one is, is uh, is nine dash two dash 14H1 capital letter A, which is the BVCP language, but there might be a bunch of things other people have.
Number 20. I have a question on number 20.
Okay, let's hear it.
So um, Carl, I think I um heard a contradiction to number 20 at, at your presentation. But this is implying that the um the energy modeling that would demonstrate the greenhouse gas emission reduction would happen at site review? But I'm thinking I heard you say that people pushed back and said, no, we can't do it at site review. We'll do it at the link from, permit. So what's actually happening with number 20?
Well, 20, uh, that's correct. Um, what we did is we, we modified number 20 here to say preliminary energy modeling and or, or, or any other documentation necessary to demonstrate. So basically what this means is that it's more like they would give us some information about what they're looking at for the, for the modeling that would occur later to demonstrate how they would meet that criteria. And they would say that they're looking into doing any number of things to meet the criteria. And we would assess that preliminarily through site review, and then it would become a condition of approval. Uh, we, they just have to show us that they have the capability of moving in that direction. That's what we're looking at.
Right.
Site review. It's not going to be solidified at that stage. So we just wanted to alert them that to look at this and start thinking about what they're going to do.
Okay, I, I would agree with that completely. Um, and I think that that's a great thing to put it into the site review, even if it's at a preliminary. Because you have to think about the building holistically. And if it's not there at the beginning, it's not going to show up. You know, after the building is designed and oh my gosh, you gotta add this in. So I, I, I'm very grateful to see that it's still there. And um, that we will be able to hold people accountable to how they're going to meet that uh, reduction from the, from the get-go. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, ML, your hand is still up. Is that what you want? Okay. People, you gotta, as we're going through this, you gotta speak up if you have a point or a question.
So we definitely have some stuff on here on page 98 related to the BVCP criterion. And I would like to ask the chair's indulgence to have a short break before we go into this criterion, because I think it's going to take a while and I have drunk too much tea.
Okay, let's uh, let's take five minutes. We'll come back at 9:08.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Perfect.
Hey, ML, your microphone's still on.
How's it going on the note taking there?
You're on mute, Sarah.
We can't hear you.
You're, you're muted.
You think after three years of Zoom, we, we know the mute thing. I'm, I'm catching the stuff that um, we're actually asking for a change and sort of making quick notes on asking staff to take a look at and consider stuff.
Well, thanks a million. That
That was fun. Really fun.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that.
Thank you for volunteering, Sarah. Um, if it's helpful, I have written notes on the things that I'm asking staff to take a look at, and I can share those with you for your if that is supportive of your task.
Oh, thanks. I think I, my, I'm, thank you. Um, my guess is that staff is also taking extensive notes, so this is more for when we return back to, is there anything specific that we want to see changed? So when we vote on it, or we, we know that we've because some of this is going to be stuff that staff's going to have to look at longer term and will not end up being included. My guess is in this initial round of approvals and because it, one of the things they say in the memo is after whatever gets approved and implemented, they'll want feedback. What's working, what's not working from planning board and applicants and city councils going forward. So things will continue to change.
Gotcha.
At least that's my sense. Maybe I, I could be wrong, Brad or Charles, am I wrong about that? They're not back yet. Nope.
No, we're, I'm, I'm back. I'm, you're absolutely right. So I appreciate you saying that, Sarah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, I think we're all back here. Let's keep going. If you can uh, hit the uh, yeah, there we go. Okay, I think uh, oh, Sarah has her hand up first. Go ahead.
Well, I think we all have our hands up to talk about the same thing. Which is this very, very, very complex F, and, and I would use the term Solomonic effort to split the baby between four very specific BVCP policies and just the unbalanced language. And I appreciate what staff, what the, the what staff's trying to balance out. But I still think it's, I think it's super complicated and let, it's the absence of clarity. So I had, I had come up with a suggestion, does not mean it's what, not, I'm just, it's just a suggestion. It's a place to start the conversation. And um, for me, that what, it's not just the complexity of this paragraph. It's also, as I said before, the whole point of this site review update is to align it with our community benefits efforts, right? And yet, if we only focus on um, the um elements of the Boulder Valley Complan that have to do with the built environment, where I think we're kind of we're not aligning with the purpose of this, not fully aligning. So I was going to recommend um uh, that H1A reads something along the lines of Boulder Valley Complan Land Use Map and Policies, colon, the proposed project is consistent with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP that address the built environment and community benefit goals and policies. Which creates a larger aperture. But also is not every single solid, it, it, it does also narrow the aperture from the the whole BVCP.
Okay, ML.
Um, thank you for that uh, perspective, Sarah. I do appreciate the expansion. Um, although my comment is not directly about that, what I'm so um, Carl, and the question I have, when I read this paragraph, one H1A, it sounds like we're holding ourselves accountable to differentiating the BVCP intent. So whether it's um, to guide development? Or is it to guide city policy? Or is it intended to be implemented through some other means rather than site use review? So my question is I, I really appreciate, I, I totally appreciate the differentiation into, there's different ways to use the information in the Boulder Valley Complan. Some of them are appropriate to the built environment. So my question is would there, would it be possible to get some kind of a chart made? That shows the Boulder Valley Complan um, built environment policies and which ones? What is their intent? Are they, are they to for development review? Are they for city policy, you know, so that we have a better understanding on how to use the BVCP as an actual tool? Rather than, I, I know that I myself would put things out there, just like, oh no, this is not the place that you use that, you, you, it's used someplace else. Would there be a, a way to have kind of a chart that, that shows us the stratification of how to use the Boulder Valley Complan information?
I mean, I think if, if the board found that to be helpful, I think that's certainly something staff could prepare. Um, you know, a matrix that just kind of shows.
Right.
Um, each policy should be applied. I, I think that that could make sense.
Well, in, in aid to this particular um, section and how you're, I think you're trying to be very clear in this, in this document that the Boulder Valley Complan has got useful place in the review. And it's got not so useful place in the review. In other words, we're not going to hold you accountable to X, Y, or Z on it. And we're not going to try to use it in a way that it shouldn't be used. And so I'm, I'm just think, I, I like that a lot. I think that it makes our job um, gives our job more specific direction. Um, so from that perspective, I think it would be incredibly useful both to keep, to keep us from, you know, moving a project or a discussion into an area where it just, it, it's not necessary to go there with the BVCP. And so that we know where can we actually use the BVCP to um, to the projects and the complan itself's advantage. So, so that's, that's, that's my comment about this, because I do think that there's been a lot of shifting of the ground on how the BVCP is going to be informing the process since we talked back in May. And I like the direction it's heading in. So the more tools that can be provided to So the more tools that can be provided to help us succeed in using it properly, I think would be would be a good thing.
Lauren.
Okay, so I apologize that these thoughts are not as organized as I would like them to be. There's a lot to say about this one. So first, I want to say I appreciate Sarah's suggestion, and I agree with it of adding in to that first sentence, the built environment and the community benefit policies of the BVCP. I think that's entirely appropriate. Thank you for that. I support it. For the rest of this paragraph that folks have found to be kind of long and confusing, when I read it, I thought it was clarifying. And I thought it was in line with some of the concerns that a minority of the board expressed in our May meeting, and then city council kind of also seems to agree with, which is the the concern that policies in the BVCP that would appear to be very appropriate to apply at like a zoning level or a sub community plan level could be used to deny individual projects. And I hear my fellow board member saying that has never happened. That's not what we're going to do. We just want to be able to discuss these things to give guidance and, you know, set a general tone, I think, is the intent here. So for example, one, one of the policies that we have differed on amongst this board is whether it's appropriate for an individual development project to be criticized on the basis of its contribution to the jobs, housing imbalance. You know, and I don't need to go into how we disagree about that. I think we all know how how we kind of split on that. And I hear people saying that a project would not be denied for that reason, but it's important to be able to discuss it. So I'm okay with being able to discuss it. I do question how valuable that is in site review with an applicant that's not going to be held to that standard because it is not something that any one particular development project. If it is compliant with the zoning and it's compliant with the sub community plan, why would we deny it based on the policies that are supposed to be informing that zoning and that sub community plan or that area plan? And I guess my fear is also informed by my experience with the board to which I am a liaison where I see things rarely result in a project denial, but they often result in a project withdrawal because the applicant just doesn't want to deal with it. It's too complicated. It's too costly. It's too expensive. It's too unpredictable. They don't know how the individual board members are going to use the criteria. And so they just withdraw their demolition permit. And I don't know if that has ever happened at planning board. Maybe we don't deny a project, but we discourage them on the basis of policies that won't they won't actually be held to. So I don't know. I wish I had good guidance for staff. I like the language that's here. I think it is clarifying around. You know, is a particular policy meant to be used for denial of a project acceptance or denial of a particular development project versus is it meant to inform zoning and area plans and the BVCP updates and, you know, legislative matters? I do note that in the city council meeting notes, they specifically directed staff that they wanted staff to quote strike a balance of achieving full BVCP compliance while avoiding language that would result in arbitrary denials of projects based on policies that are not explicitly developed to are directed to development projects. So I think staff really are trying to thread the needle here. I think ML's suggestion of trying to create a chart that says here are the BVCP policies that apply to site review. Here are the BVCP policies that are more legislative in nature is an interesting suggestion. I think we would still argue about the results of that exercise. And I guess where I come down on it is I don't know that I personally. Well, I'm conflicted because if you don't put it in stone, you don't set it into the the site review criteria. Whatever understanding we have between the seven of us today can change over time. So I like the idea of putting something in here that talks about how no project will be denied on the basis of one BVCP policy. But I'm a little concerned about where that could lead because maybe there's some BVCP policy that is absolutely essential that I'm not considering. So I'm going to stop there. I'm just being completely honest about why I'm conflicted about this one and why it's important to me.
Thank you. Sarah.
So Laura, I appreciate your comments. I would just take a look at the what section two, which is the built environment section covers, which is city structure, sustainable urban farm, community identity and land use pattern, rural land preservation, neighborhoods, locations for mixed use, public realm, community conservation and preservation and design quality. What it doesn't include is anything related to the natural environment, anything related to energy, climate and waste, anything related to economy, anything related to transportation or housing or community well being and safety. And I feel really strongly that to to that those many of those areas fall into the category of community benefit and we need to the site review process is an opportunity which, as you just said, so I'm reiterating what you just said, because you were reiterating what I have said and what others on the panel have said. It is an opportunity, one of two that we have, concept review and site review, to reinforce concerns about elements of the Boulder Valley Complan that are being forgotten, ignored, set aside, deprioritized despite how important they might be. And it concerns me greatly that we would cut off an arm of our work when this is really a key opportunity, key moments in these processes to remind the city, to remind city council, to remind ourselves, to remind staff that there are other things besides the built environment that planning encompasses and incorporates. So it's just so I'll leave it at that.
I think I see Hella can share some wisdom with us.
Oops, trouble unmuting. Thanks, John. I have a follow up question on the language that Sarah and Laura were discussing adding. I think it was to not only reference the build environment in the on balance finding, but also the community benefit, community benefit. And I think it would be helpful for us to understand a little bit better what policies you were thinking about in that regard.
You're muted, Sarah.
Well, I think that's a good question, and we we we've been throwing around the term community benefit for five years. And it's still not defined by code, right? It's defined in the one dash, one dot, one O or one dot, one two. I think it's one dot, one, two now. But it lists a whole bunch of things. Sorry, I just have to open my book. Actually, I may I may have got it in my notes here. Yeah. So one dash, one, two Boulder Valley Complan, community benefit language. For land use or zoning district changes that result in increase in the density or intensity of development beyond what is permitted by the underlying zoning or added height that increases intensity, the city will develop regulations and incentives so that the new development provides benefits to the community beyond those otherwise required by the underlying zoning. Any incentives are intended to address the community economic, social and environmental objectives of the comprehensive plan. Community objectives include without limitation, affordable housing, affordable commercial space, space for the arts, community gathering space, public art, land for parks, open space, environmental protection or restoration, outdoor spaces and other other identified social needs and services. Community objectives may also be identified through other planning or policymaking efforts of the city. And I read that as almost everything that's in the Boulder Valley Complan, right? Which is why I think the on that what we used to use, the language that we have been using, this on balance allows for a fulsome conversation at at site review, at at concept review and site review. But also is, as John noted, has literally never been used to deny a project. There are all kinds of other reasons to deny a project. I just think that this is, I don't know where the idea came from originally, which was to limit us to three or four particular components of the Boulder Valley Complan. So without knowing what the initial motivation was, like whose idea originally was and what commute part of the community it came from, it's very hard to understand what the motive was. Given that there's to everyone's knowledge, never been a project that's been rejected because of it doesn't meet some component of the Boulder Valley Complan. So but this is part of the community benefits discussion, and yet all word, all this language does is say, not my language, but the proposed language is it can only be about the built environment. Well, that is not aligned with the community benefits discussion.
Yeah, and historically, when when community benefit originally came up and was incorporated into the Complan, it was talked about in we want additional community benefit if somebody asks for additional density or height and granted it through the site review criteria. And one of the reasons I'm asking about that is because I I can think of of the top of my head of two policies that specifically address community benefit, but they're all drafted around a goal that the city will amend its regulations to implement that versus being a site review requirement. So I think that's something to consider in how we draft this and and what the intent is and whether it's consistent with what the Complan states.
I guess I'm not understanding, hello, what you're I'm sorry, I'm just not understand because this lists one dot, one, one dash, one, two lists a whole bunch of things that are considered community benefit. But you're saying that it can only be community benefit if there's a if this is what this really is saying is the city needs to create a policy. Like, I just don't understand what you're saying.
I think so. When this was originally added to the code, if you read the policy, the one point twelve, it talks about if there is a land use or zoning district change that results in increases in the density or intensity of development beyond what is permitted by the underlying zone zoning district or for added height, the city will develop regulations and incentives so that the new development provides benefits to the community beyond those otherwise required by underlying zoning. And then it lists that what kind of community benefits it can be. But it talks about it in terms of the city is going to develop regulations that will require additional community benefits if a project seeks or if there's some kind of regulatory change that it results in increases in density. Or it was basically a dot. It was basically put in here for the community benefit project that we implemented through the height modification standards.
So you're saying that none of these other community objectives count?
I'm not saying that they that they don't count, but I I think these two specific policies that talk about community benefit specifically address code changes that the city is going to make.
I'm sorry, I'm a little lost. The language that Sarah read, where is that? Is that in the BVCP? Is that in Title IX?
No, it's BVCP one dot, one, two.
One dot, one, two.
So Hella, are you saying that the community benefit that we have in place right now at use review is limited to, this is not what you said, but is limited to the inclusionary housing benefit? Isn't that a community benefit that we get from added?
From added height?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good question. We we went through a code process where we analyzed that and where we proposed different different types of community benefit. And then we landed on the main community benefit that the city wanted was actually an affordable housing benefit. In this, this particular ordinance, we're actually proposing to broaden that and create more flexibility to provide community benefit in in other ways. But but that part of the site review criteria was really intended to implement the goal and policy one point, one, two.
So to go back in time a little bit, community benefit, you know, before 2019 was only applicable in a development review project when it was an annexation. Because there's a specific BVCP policy about annexation and talking about community benefits. So knowing that we were moving in the direction of of applying community benefit through site review, that's when policy one point, one, two was developed to set the goal of let's let's define what community benefit is and how and that and give the order to address it through code changes. So in 2019, we did the first part of community benefit and added the new language and and even through this particular ordinance, like you can see the underlying language, we're trying to expand that as to allow alternatives to meet that community benefit.
So so just just a question about the history of the chart, Carl, Carl. It was my remembrance that the community benefit conversation got triggered because of the nonexistent but promised community benefit in the old daily camera building.
I think that was certainly a project that brought that discussion forward, but I think the community benefit discussion predated even that project. I think there was a growing sentiment. You know, even though it wasn't in the code at the time, that if a developer was allowed to build more floor area or add additional floors above the zoning district limit, what is the community getting in return? I've been hearing that for, you know, a lot of my duration here, even before the daily camera building. So it kind of grew, and I think that was just an example project that kind of led to that policy discussion. And that policy discussion happened in the last BVCP update. And then since then, we've been integrating that into our land use code.
Okay, so I think I'm understanding what Hella said, and I appreciate Carl's history of this. I'm not in I personally am not interested in limiting this our planning board or future planning boards from being able to present concerns about or or praise projects because of how they do or don't advance elements of the Boulder Valley Complan. I think it's a vitally important role that planning board plays in highlighting key issues that are addressed that are that are planning issues for the city. So I'm not interested in language that deeply limits that ability of ours and of future planning boards.
ML.
Um, Carl, can we get our? Did we lose your screen?
It it froze up, so I'm trying to unfreeze.
Oh, um, what I was so oh, there we go. So in this one A, H1A, that addressed the built environment, I didn't interpret the built environment to be just the chapter that is titled built environment. There's no capital threat under built environment. So I assumed it would take in into account the other components of the Boulder Valley Complan that are of course vital to the built environment. Was your was is the staff's thinking that this built environment that is in line like twenty one and a half? Was just that chapter?
I don't know that we were thinking that it was just that chapter. I think there were suggestions to limit to that chapter. I think there could be other policies that relate to the built environment that are in other sections. But I don't know that we were specifically looking at just limiting it to that section.
Right, right. Well, being that it's not capital. Right, right. Well, being that it's not capital letters, I didn't read it that way, but once Sarah kind of noted that it was in her interpretation, she read it, it was just that section two built environment where the natural environment, energy, climate and waste, economy, transportation, all of those are are vital and important. So um I don't know if we have to be it just should say that address the policies. I I I'm not sure how that should read to, in fact, be more inclusive. Because if it's just that one section, I I'm in full agreement. That's just way too exclusive of a of a BVCP section. Um, and we're not even, you know, expanding it into the community benefit, which doesn't have its own little policy chapter. So I don't know. Does anybody else have any thoughts about about um expanding even the concept of what constitutes the built environment?
I'll call on Mark and then I'll have some comments thereafter.
So this this thorny question is really trying to address the interrelated nature of darn near everything. And that's that is, you know, what, really? I mean, it's like transportation and housing and affordability and community benefit. So so and and the BVCP, I think, does an excellent job of and 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 as Sarah points out often that, hey, you can, you can, it's like the Bible, you can kind of read it um anyway you want and interpret it in many different ways. And and it is an aspirational document. Uh, so we have this thing, it's interrelated and 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 so I I but I'm struggling with the language here because I do find it complex. And I I I find myself wondering, do I agree with Sarah or Laura? Or what is it that I agree with? But I do know this, that I think that as we evaluate projects that to um not be able to look broadly at the goals as laid out by the BVCP uh and to make the scope uh so narrow that um that we're protecting um a developer from uncertainty would be a mistake because a project uh does need to address, you know, the built environment does address transportation, does address community benefit. So I don't want it to um constrict us too much. And at the same time, I I think when I I I just scanned through the comments of council members on this on this subject. And I'm going to do a little political interpretation, say that the fear noted by certain council members, I think, might have been a result of our denial of uh use review based on BBC policies. Now, use review has a different set of criteria and and you have to fulfill certain BBC policies to go through to be successful in going through a use review. And I know that that gave some heartburn to some council members on uh on the project that that we denied the use review. So going back to the paragraph here in front of us, as I read it, I would um be almost good with a period uh, you know, after on ballot, well, no, after um at at the built environment, line three, period, and then including the final sentence, uh make a final sentence that just says, hey, no, no project must fulfill all BBC policies or can't or no project may be denied because of the failure to meet a a single BBC policy. So Brad's Brad's raising his hand here. I'm gonna stop.
Yeah, if I can offer a um observation based on a career's worth of hearing a version of this debate um over the years, I I appreciate the position the boards in. Um. And and I would share that it's not unique. What you're basically struggling with is this idea that um the comprehensive plan should be able to be considered comprehensively, hence the name. But that any one element shouldn't be and and it hope this doesn't sound as politically charged term, but just for simplification, weaponized to kill a project that in a broader context and with broad consideration of the comp plan would be, you know, otherwise supported. It, you know, it's a fair debate and it's one that has happened everywhere uh in inland use. Um, I think staff did a noble job in trying to come up with language that really thread the needle and and I appreciate the acknowledgement of that. Um, but I I would almost suggest going back to the basics along the line of what's what's being discussed right now. And and I'll offer this in the context that at the end of the day, um you all are acting in a quasi judicial manner when you're hearing a particular case and the essence of quasi judicial is judging. And judging is judging and weighing those various things. So going back to the basics could be as simple as saying um the first part of that sentence, that the proposed project is consistent with the land use map and on on balance and with the goals and policies of the comp plan. And maybe just a nuance, particularly those that address the built environment, the acknowledgement of what you all are speaking of as the main focus of presumably the main focus of site plan. Um, I think a lot of the other is nuanced that that everybody's struggling with. Um, I think too that um you know, the comment about uh balancing them is already stated in the comp plan. It would be my expectation that on page nine of the comp plan, people would bring that up to the degree that that's not being applied fairly in their estimation in in your role as judges on a particular case. Um, but that's just an observation based on my experience and I offer it for what it's worth.
Thank you. I'll uh throw in my two bits point right now. Um, I I greatly appreciate Sarah's and Brad's and Mark's thoughts, and I I think the term threading the needle is is quite accurate here. Um, but I I would like to take a step back and ask us make us think about what our proper role is, both in terms of developing the Boulder Valley Comp Plan and interpreting it for use in specific uh quasi judicial situations. Uh, speaking as someone who's who's been involved now in in four or five iterations of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan over the last twenty-five years. Um, I can say that the intention behind in at least in 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 my observation of those who were involved in developing the comp plan is that it be applied to all circumstances in which it can be at all relevant. Secondly, the role of the planning board is in this case, independent from council. We have independent authority with respect to the adoption of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And it seems to me that uh although we are appointed by the council, once we're appointed, we are asked to use our best judgment in moving forward with both the adoption and the use of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And so applying any sort of restrictions cripples our ability to do our job, in my opinion, as well as the intent under which the the comp plan was created. So uh I I think that, you know, these these attempts to thread the needle are appropriate, but when we're considering it, we need to consider what our appropriate role is in uh dealing in for which we were appointed. And secondly, uh the interpretation of the given the the record we have of interpreting in a reasonable way the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, I I fail to understand why there is this pressure. Uh, well, in fact, I understand very well the the politics of the situation, but I think that it's given our proper role, it's inappropriate to try and influence our use of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan to carry out our job. Laura.
So I appreciate the thoughtful remarks of everyone who has spoken. And I, you know, I can read the tea leaves that I'm going to be in the minority here. But I'll just say, I don't think it's appropriate to take a hundred and seventy-four page document and say that any piece of that is fair game for a a development project that's trying to achieve a specific goal. Um, I do think that part of the aim of this project was to increase predictability. And I I don't like being one of seven people who are entitled or empowered to take anything in the comp plan that we want and use it to judge a a project by. And I guess I don't understand if we are not actually going to use this criterion as a basis to approve or deny projects, then why is it so important that we keep it in here in the form that it has been? If it has never actually been used in a way to impact a project, because I I suspect it probably has been used to impact projects, maybe not a denial outright. Um, but I I don't have a long enough tenure with the board to understand exactly how it's used. I just sympathize with the objective of this project to simplify how this hundred and seventy-four page document is used in the specific context of site review. I absolutely agree that part of our purview and our charge as planning board members is, you know, updates to the BVCP, applying the BVCP to legislative matters like zoning and area plans and and that sort of thing. I I just, yeah. I have said what I said, and I support staff's language here. I think it is an appropriate balance of the feedback that they got from planning board, from the site review committee, from city council. Um, and if this is one of the things that that people want to recommend to council, um, I I don't agree with that, but you know, we don't all have to agree.
George.
I'll I'll I've been listening to everything. I I I gotta say um, I think John's comments encapsulated exactly my thoughts as well. Um, and so I just wanted to put my position there and and thoughts there because I I think um, no, no reason to state exactly what you stated again. I I thought it was excellently put and 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 that's also my view. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we need to uh, okay, Sarah.
Um, so I want to read what um I'm gonna, I'm got, so this is actually the language from Brad. So it would read, instead of what's in there now, it would read, or proposing, it would read BVCP land use map and policies. The proposed project is consistent uh with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP, particularly those that address the built environment. Is that what? How are folks in response to that as a as a a proposed alternative?
I, oh, go ahead.
I heard that, Mel.
I was just gonna say that um I would just not be that specific. Just get, end it with the goals and policies of the BVCP period.
So so go back to what, basically, it's back to what it was in, what it currently is.
But I I I am not in disagreement with the um intent of the application that it shall be consistently interpreted and et cetera, et cetera, all those other sentences. I think it it starts to to um give a sort of those edges that the process is looking to try to put without saying, but you can't look here and you can't look there, just saying, just be consistent. Just be consistent. And some of these things make sense in development, and some of these things are about policies that are about codes. Um, so I do appreciate the process of giving some substance to how the Boulder Valley Comp Plan needs to land out there in the world, i.e. consistently. Um, and not trying to do something that a um a development review process should be doing. So I say just take off any of the limiting factors and then look at the at the at the application process.
I see Hella might have something to tell us.
Yeah, I I I appreciated ML's thoughts and I was gonna mention that what we drafted in here and how to apply it, those are really things that already apply. Um, because you are required to apply the code in a consistent manner and interpret it in a consistent manner. And with the comp plan, you will probably remember from the trainings that we've done in the past, you always have to be careful in how you apply the policies because the content is drafted as a broad policy document and has other functions uh than the regulatory function that it's put into through the site review reference to the comp plan. So it's not drafted as um precisely as other regulations. But the constitution requires that if these types of um requirements are imposed on a property owner, that they're sufficiently clearly drafted so that the property owner is unnoticed what might be required under the under the regulations that are being applied. And when you apply the comp plan on balance finding, you always have to be careful and read the policies carefully and think about what I'm doing with this policy and how how I am applying it. Is it written in a way that the landowner would know about that? Or a reasonable landowner would have noticed about that? So that kind of constitutional limitation is, I guess, what we're what we were trying to um address in when we drafted the applied criteria. And then the last part of it um refers to how the comp plan talks about how the policies are to be applied itself. So in my mind, all of these different things that we said you should consider, you have to consider anyways, whether that's written here in that way or not.
Thank you.
So can I just, sorry, can I just follow up on what Hella said? I'm I'm trying to incorporate that into, I'm trying to incorporate ML's thoughts and Hella's response. So what I, what I'm, what I just did, I don't know if it's the right thing, is I eliminated the uh particularly the built environment phraseology. So now it says the proposed project is consistent with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP in applying this criterion, should it be these criterion, this, these, I think it should be the, it's a plural, right?
Criteria.
These criteria, the approving authority shall consistently interpret and apply these criteria. Is that, Hella, does that, I mean, I think what you said was whether or not it's the language is in there, that's our responsibility is to apply them consistently.
It is correct.
All right, so, but I'm trying to capture that there was a staff you guys wanted that consistency component in there for a reason, even though it's implied in our responsibilities. Um, but you you put it in there for a reason, yeah?
Yeah, I think it was in response to council's feedback in giving more direction on how to apply that.
Okay. So if I add that sentence in applying this crit- I'll let you guys wordsmith whether it should be this criteria or these this criterion or these criteria. In applying this criterion, the approving authority shall consistently interpret and apply this criterion, which does not limit us from having a fulsome discussion about X, Y, or Z. It means that we'd have to have a really good reason under utilizing code to argue that a particular vitally important BBC plant, BBC policy has not been Um, is 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 so radically undermined that we're gonna reject a project because of it.
Sarah, I think that that one sentence doesn't fully capture what what you just said. It just says you have to be consistent. So you could be. Consistently wrong, right? Um, I think I heard Hella say that all of this, this whole paragraph is what staff was suggesting as. Elaborating on how we are to apply the on balance criterion. Hella, is that what you were saying that this whole paragraph is what you were suggesting for guidance on how to apply it?
Yeah, the the whole second sentence, I guess, in it.
But I, okay, I, I don't wanna, I know Mark has his hand up. I just, I don't understand. I don't think this makes sense. Maybe it makes sense. To a lawyer. Seriously, I don't take, I don't mean that as an insult at all, but.
No, I I said, I think you're saying this, this is too complex and maybe we can simplify it.
Yeah, it's super complex. And I don't think it's clarifying at all. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mark. Let's.
Oh, I have a question for Hella first and then uh one proposed set of language. So. The this last sentence that was added or the last portion, very last portion. Um, uh, BBC does not prioritize goals and policies and no policy or goal. Or set of policies must be satisfied by any one development project. Is that stated anywhere else in the code or in the BVCP in that fashion?
The BVCP. States the policies are not prioritized and no one policy or set of policies must be satisfied. By any action ordinance, regulation, development review or program.
Okay, so, um. Interesting, cause I I find the 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 plural, the plural nature of that of uh. Set of policies or goals, suddenly it's like, well. A developer, it seems to me a developer could interpret that. It's like, yeah, it doesn't really require that I I um. Uh, I satisfy much of anything because if if you, if you don't have to require. On the whole, seems like it's saying, gee, you have to satisfy. On the whole, a bunch of this stuff. And then, and then we turn around and say, yeah, you don't really have to. So the language. I have looked at here and drafted and I'm happy to send it is. The proposed project is consistent with the BBC land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP. Period. The BVCP does not prioritize goals and policies. And no single policy or goal must be satisfied by any one development project. So you couldn't, we couldn't use some, a single policy to reject a project when. On balance. It it meets the BVCP. Um, so anyway, I I that, to me, that's a very simple way of stating it. While prohibiting us from unjustly. Um, or inconsistently using a single policy to. Uh, reject a project, which seems to be what council's fear is.
Lisa.
Um. I'm hearing a lot from from various quarters that I completely um agree with and I understand. I I don't want to like call it conflict, but I just understand why we have um some different ideas about how to make the language as good as possible. I guess. My question, um, partially born of having seen this exact debate happen many, many times in the past. Um, and having seen staff work hard on this and the time, um, and and I. I will be leaving in not too long, regardless of what we do. Um. I guess I circle back to the question or the direction that you gave us at the beginning of the night, John, and and I wonder if. Other planning board members, um, the chair, the staff maybe have a thought on this and that is. Is it productive for us to keep trying to wordsmith this and get this perfect? Is it more productive to hand it back to staff? Are we going to come up with perfect language tonight? Um, or or ever, I'm I'm maybe being a little fatalistic again. I've I've seen this exact debate around BVCP happen. It's it's so common. Um, and and then I guess I just want to add with all those of those um questions that I just posed. Um. Ultimately, what whatever it is that we have this language say, I I I think the reality is that we each as individual board members and then as a collective body. Decide how we're going to treat the BVCP and how we're going to use it or not use it. You know, as as we have things come up before us. Um. And so whether the language is perfect or not, doesn't necessarily seem to matter that much. You know, it's more about what we do with it. Um, and I've never seen boards, I I I'm not sure that however we change the language is actually going to change what we do. Because I've never seen it change what we do in the past. Um, so again, I I have, I have this. Um. Frame, you know, you know, partially born of of the time of 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 evening and the fact that it's a Tuesday and also. Just for having seen this many, many times before to just say, you know, perhaps without stifling the conversation without. You know, ignoring the excellent work that everyone has already done that that we may wish, you know, up to the chair and the rest of the board, we may wish to wrap. This portion up, see if there's other stuff we want to talk about and perhaps um hand it back to staff with my apologies to staff. Um, because I I'm just not sure we're going to get. Somewhere that different um or better.
Okay, let's uh, let's have one more round and uh then do some thumbs. Mark.
Sorry.
Laura.
I agree with Lisa's suggestion. Um, I I personally think that, you know, if staff and particularly our attorney feel that these are our obligations anyway, then. And they've taken language directly from the BVCP, especially for that last portion. I'm perfectly fine with the language that staff has here. If we want to give direction to staff to please tighten it up or try to clarify it a little bit, I'm fine with that too. I just want to say to Mark, um, that I appreciated your suggestion about no single policy. But I'm not sure that that's a panacea because there are so many BVCP policies that are related. That for any issue that you care about, you could probably cite two or three. So I'm just not sure that that would do what you want it to do.
Understood.
Okay. Alright.
Wait, 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 wait. Um, ML has her hand up and then I also just want to read to you guys what I'm, the two options, the two proposed options I will send to staff.
Okay, ML.
Thank you. Um, I suggest that this one A, um. Read as it is, except for remove. That piece of the sentence that says that address the built environment. And leave everything else as staff has proposed. That's just not limited to, since it's. Seems to be able to be interpreted as just the one section of the BVCP. Um, let's just take it out and um. Leave everything else in. I think that to me is the only really truly troublesome part is that it um. It could be interpreted to be just that one section of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, which I I. Would completely disagree with. So that would be my suggestion. Leave it as is, except remove. Those one, two, three, those five words at the end of the first sentence.
Okay, so the three, I'm sending staff three options from which they can. Throw them out the window or whatever they want to do. One is the proposed project is consistent with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP. In applying this criterion, the approving authority shall consistently interpret and apply this criterion. Second option, the proposed project is consistent with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP. BVCP does not prioritize goals and policies and it is recognized that no policy and goal or set of policies and goals must be satisfied. By any one development project. I think we have to add particular, no particular policy, no specific, okay? Um, and then the third option is uh what ML just said, which is everything staff currently has in the language minus. The phrase with the goals and policies of the BVCP that address the built environment. So I'm gonna send that off to staff for them to pick and choose. Everyone okay with that?
I I'm okay with that with one caveat, which is that I would also be okay with staff rewording that clause about addressing the built environment. I agree that it's confusing. Sarah, you made a great point that it could be interpreted to mean just that one chapter. Or one set of the policy chapter in the BVCP. But I think, you know, council did give um some specific direction on this. And so I think that if staff want to. Reword it a bit so that it's not as confusing, I would be open to that.
Awesome.
Okay. I think it's appropriate for to do some thumbs here. Uh, so who who likes the first? I'm trying to remember what the first one was that you.
John, can I, can I make an alternative suggestion? That, because I've already sent off all three to staff is let them, they've heard all this, let them sort of. Winnow it down rather than, does that, people are okay with, what do you think of that, John?
I I actually would like to give a thumbs up to ML's proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think it's important for us. I mean, if we put it back in staff's hands, we, you know, we have essentially lost control over a very important. Element in my opinion. So it's, I think we should do a thumbs here.
Okay, so then I'll, so the first one is. Uh, the proposed project is consistent with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP. In applying this criterion, the approving authority shall consistently interpret and apply this criterion.
Right. I like that.
I'm good with that one.
Do we get just one vote or you can vote for as many as you want?
Yeah, can I just vote for all of them and?
Yeah, that's. Me too.
Yeah, I'm good with that one too.
For as many as you like.
Okay. Alright, so the second one is the proposed project is consistent with the BVCP land use map and on balance with the goals and policies of the BVCP. BV- BVCP does not prioritize goals and policies and it is recognized that no specific. Policy or goal or set of policies and goals must be satisfied by any one development project. Also okay with that one.
Good with that one too.
Okay, and then the third one is of what staff currently has minus. Uh, the phrase with the goals and policies of the BVCP that address the built environment.
No, I don't think that, I think I wanted to keep the goals and policies of the BVCP in. I just wanted that address the built environment out.
Correct, yes.
Oh, my apologies, okay.
So, yes, to removing the five words that address the built environment.
Right.
So that one got the most votes, it looks like.
That one got three.
Uh, John's got a thumb up and Lisa, are you a thumb up on that last one as well? So that's five.
Okay. We're still leaving it in staff's hands because it's basically, it was seven, there were six, there was five, I mean.
Okay.
Alright.
Think we gotta keep moving here.
Okay.
So.
I have one on the next page.
Okay.
Page ninety-nine. And this is uh about um historic and cultural resources. I don't think we're quite there yet.
E.
E. So I um appreciate staff's intent here. So this is about um. Uh, what is this overall section? Can someone remind me what this overall section is?
This is nine dash two dash fourteen H. This is the intro.
To what?
To to all of the site review criteria.
Yeah, okay.
This whole section relates to the Boulder Valley Commensive Plan as well.
Okay, it says no site review application shall be approved unless the approving agency finds that the project is consistent with the following criteria. And that's what this list is. So we're saying the approving agency has to find that. The site review application is consistent with the following criteria. And I feel strongly that number E here, letter E, is not our job. It is not our expertise. We don't have the staff available. Landmarks Board specifically deals with landmarking. They have a whole process that they follow. And trying to landmark over the objection of the property owner is something that is not taken lightly. It is done extremely rarely. Um, and seriously, and city council has the opportunity to overrule it. So I do not think that planning board should be taking the reins and saying that. No site review application shall be approved unless the approving agency, us, finds that the project is consistent with. This section E on historic or cultural resources. I don't think that we should be requiring application and good faith pursuit of a local landmark designation. That's basically requiring landmarking potentially over the objection of the property owner. And so I just feel very, very strongly that this is not at all our job. I think it's fine if we want to say, hey, I think this building might have historic or cultural resources. And I think landmarks should take a close look at it and then we should turn the reins over to them and not make it one of our criteria for site review. I just, this is just not anything that we have any kind of expertise on. And listening to their conversations about it, it's extremely complicated. Like, take for example, the Millennium Harvest House Hotel. There are a lot of people who thought that that building should have been landmarked and not demolished. There is a demolition permit that is active for that. It's allowed to be demolished. And the reason why is because it is, does not have historical integrity. It's been modified too much. That is not something I would have known except from sitting on landmarks board and listening to their erudite, educated. Expert conversation. So. That's my feeling about E.
Okay, uh, let's do some thumbs. Ella has a thoughts here too.
Yeah, I. I wanted to um give a little bit more context to this. This proposed language, it's actually. It kind of mirrors language that's often been used as a condition of approval inside every applications where. Uh, hit significant historic resource is involved. And currently the complan states that the city will seek protection of significant historic and cultural resources. Through local designation, when a proposal by the private sector is subject to discretionary development review. So that's been in the complan for a while and. Um, there have been a number of projects that have come through where we required exactly what. Um, the second sentence there states and ultimately whether something is landmarked would still be up to the landmarks board and city council. Um, we've always drafted it such that planning board's requirement would be just application and good faith pursued. Of landmarking. You're you're right that it it may ultimately against the wishes of the developer, Laura. Um, which is different from most landmarking applications, but through the development review process, there has been. Um, a history of this in practice.
That that feels different to me than saying we can refer it to landmarks to consider. Whether this property has historic or cultural resources. This says. That the applicant has to per- in good faith pursue local landmark designation, which is a different process entirely. It's different, a different code section. And and that presumes that the board is going to assume that the applicant wants landmarking, that they're requesting landmarking. And I don't think that that is our job to tell the applicant, you must request landmarking, even if you don't want it. I think if if the landmarks board wants to impose that on somebody, that's their, that's their prerogative. Um, in conjunction with city council, but I just. Like, I have absolutely no expertise in whether a building has historic or cultural resources. And I don't think it's my job as a planning board member to tell somebody you must pursue in good faith a local landmark designation.
ML.
Um, yes, thank you. So. On on the same, um. Number E here. I would suggest. That the language, so with present, the project identifies significant historic and cultural resources. Um. I do think that it is important in a um. In our review process. To be aware. And to be cognizant. And for the applicant to be aware and cognizant of significant. Um, res- cultural and historic resource. Uh, but I I wouldn't put the onerous on them to protect it. I would put the onerous on to identify it. It exists, it's here. Um, to speak to your point, Laura, um, it says may. Um, it says may, the approving authority may require application. Um, you know, that that gives a lot of leeway as to where that does or doesn't go. Um, I'm thinking about the building that is coming up that just had concept review where the um Mecca Building. I think that the applicant got some mixed messages on on that on the the building itself. And that maybe the um, planning board didn't give them enough direction. When they, when it came around the first time, I I wasn't on planning board. I don't I don't know what happened, but I I think that we do have a responsibility to give some direction. Um, this might be more, this might be a little too directive, but I do feel that we have a responsibility to speak. Um, if there is a significant resource to um, speak about it.
Mark.
Well, this may be a shock to you all, but I'm an expert at almost nothing. And so if expertise is required to um to to approve or deny something, then maybe I should quit quit my position on planning board. And I think that that we we rely on expertise and outside resources, including staff to uh present us with options. And we sometimes act as a backstop to a landmarks board. And sometimes council acts as a backstop to us. And so I I don't have a problem with the language as as it is here. Um, and and just I I I think our our job is to use our judgment. And I think that this allows us to use our judgment. So that's what I've got to say about it.
Sarah.
Uh, I agree with ML and Mark.
That was short and sweet. George.
Yeah, I I also agree with Mark and ML there. I my understanding of the way that Hella framed this was that this this may require an application, but ultimately it would be up to landmarks at that point anyway. So um, I'm supportive of the existing language.
Okay, as am I. Laura.
I again, by myself the minority, that's okay. I would just ask staff to talk to Marcy, the the staff over in landmarks about whether the right thing for us to be requiring is good faith pursuit of a local landmark designation. Or is the right thing for us to be recommending is that the landmarks board review the project under their normal process. Um, because I feel like pursuit of a local landmark designation is its own specific code section. And I'm not sure that is the right code section that we should be trying to trigger here. So I I just would ask if you have not already consulted with Marcy about this. I hear Hella saying this is already kind of in the code, but I find this alarming.
Okay, George, your hand is still up. Oh, okay. All right, I think uh I think our thoughts are known here. Let's proceed. Speak up when uh when we get to a a point where you'd like to talk about it.
I can't take notes and watch the thing go by, so sorry. Maybe you could um, read out where we are.
Uh, we are on housing diversity and bedroom unit types, and I do have something here for ninety-nine F. But if Sarah, if you have something that's before that.
I I don't. I just I can't. I can't look at both at the same time. So thank you.
Sure. Um, so I have a question for staff on this one. So this section here ninety-nine F, housing diversity and bedroom unit types says, except in the R R R E and R L one zoning districts, projects that are more than fifty percent residential by measure of floor area, et cetera, et cetera, have to meet certain um, housing and bedroom unit type requirements. And this is the thing about they have to have two different types of housing or two different bedroom types. I guess I just wanted to know why is R R R E and R L one called out as an exemption here?
These particular zones are zones that al- already do not permit more than a detached single family home on them based on um, the use standards. Um, that could change. And if it were to change, we would obviously update this criterion, but we didn't want to create an expectation that before any change like that, that a project would have to meet the the housing more than one housing type in those zones because it would conflict with the the other parts of the code.
But if it's a single family housing project, it wouldn't fall under this anyway, right?
No, I mean, if if there was a large enough project that had more than I think it's twenty dwelling units in those zones, it triggers site review.
I see. Okay. Well, with that explanation and with the understanding that if that change, if those zoning districts change, this would be updated. I'm okay with this. Okay, thank you for answering the question.
ML.
My question is down a few to number six V one.
But I
are you on that? Are you before that, Sarah?
Um, uh, you're still an F, right?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I just had something about um, little Roman numeral, little Roman numeral one.
Oh, yeah.
Do you mind? Do you mind? I'm sorry.
Not at all. Go for it.
Um, you know, I don't think it's likely that a project of five acres or less is just going to have one bedroom type, but I thought it might be worthwhile just clarifying. Um, it said so that it would read something like project, project, projects, five acres or less shall include at least one qualifying housing type. Um, and then I was going to propose with at least two bedroom types just so that we don't end up with a mono um, a monoculture of types of units. I don't know whether folks feel that's necessary or not, but I just.
Can you clarify what you mean by bedroom type? I'm not.
So in the code, the housing type for the it's later on in the same section for the purposes of this sub paragraph, qualifying housing type shall mean duplexes, attached dwelling units, townhouses, live work units, or efficiency living units. And bedroom type shall mean studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, or three bedroom units. So it's just um so you have if you have a five acre or five acre or less project and it's an apartment building. Um, we've we've, we have said that you can't have only efficiency living units because now they have to have a a second housing type. But we don't say anything about if it's an attached dwelling, it's all apartments, that it couldn't all be one bedrooms. So I'm just suggesting that we we require at least two bedroom types in 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 these types of um developments. It just seemed like more of a clarification. I mean, I I don't think we've ever seen a project where someone says, I just want to do one bedrooms. But I I figure it can't hurt to be clear that we would like to have a diversity of dwelling of bedroom types. I don't know how others feel about that.
I think for me, it gets to a little bit of um, a clarification that I would like from staff about what they mean by the unit types and the bedroom types, which is in the section that ML was going to talk about VI, little little Roman numeral six. Like the the bedroom types, does that just apply to apartment buildings? Or is that also like townhouses? You must have a one bedroom townhouse and a two bedroom townhouse and a three bedroom townhouse. I guess I don't quite understand exactly.
Yeah, I think the intent for bedroom type was more for like attached. We could clarify that in the language.
Can we scroll down to that little Roman numeral six real quick? Just so we can all see what what we're talking about here. This is the definition of qualifying qualifying housing types shall mean duplexes, attached dwelling units, townhouses, live work units, or efficiency living units, and bedroom types shall mean studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom. And so you're saying, Carl, that bedroom types that only applies to apartments or condos?
I I think that's what we were thinking. Um, we usually don't specify bedroom bedroom types for, you know, single family or townhouses or or duplexes.
Okay, and I'm and I'm just realizing that my suggestion may be moot because of V. Projects with more than twenty twenty dwelling units shall include at least two different bedroom types. I think that thought that addresses what I was trying to raise. So I take it back.
Yeah, and I had concerns about that because like sometimes we do have some old site reviews that might be like a duplex. You know, where they just want to do a little addition or something, and all of a sudden they're snagged and, you know, not having the right bedroom type. So yeah.
I withdraw.
So we we could clarify that language to be to attached.
Great.
Yeah, can I ask a question about attached? So looking again at little Roman numeral six, you say duplexes, and then you go right to attached dwelling units. Does attached dwelling units mean apartments and condos? Like, where do triplexes and quadplexes fit in?
I mean, typically, right now, the way it is in the code, once you go above a duplex, that it becomes attached dwelling units.
So attached dwelling units can mean anything from a triplex up to a a hundred apartments.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry, ML.
Go ahead, ML.
Okay. Little little six there. Um, my point with little six there was, um, Carl, might that want to go at the beginning so that we know what you're talking about? You know, put the definition up there first at the start of this little section so that we don't. I mean, everybody, not everybody, but a lot of people ask the questions like, okay, so what does that mean? Uh, a housing type or a a bedroom type? Just put it at the beginning of F. The definitions so that we don't get we don't get confused. Does that make sense?
I mean, I I think that works for us if if the board other board members agree.
Well, to avoid confusion, put the definitions before you start using the terms.
I think it helps to clarify.
Do we want to do thumbs? Do you need thumbs from us, Carl?
I see a lot of thumbs, so.
Um, and then my second question is on uh seven, which is right below it. Does anybody have anything else on V one? Can we go to seven?
Go ahead.
So my question is, it um the applicant shall demonstrate that the project fulfills another at least equivalent compelling community need related to housing as identified. So is compelling community need identified in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan somewhere? Is that a term that people will be able to 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 find?
I I don't know if that particular wording is found in the complaint. I think we were trying to get it here is that if there was a project that was you know, providing housing for a a segment of the community that that needs housing that's not identified here, we could point to the comp plan and and maybe they don't meet the housing diversity requirement here, but they're providing something different, and this would give that flexibility to do that. Um, we we have section seven of the BVCP, which relates to housing, and it has a number of different policies for um, providing different types of um, housing for you know, people of special needs or seniors or things like that. I think this particular criterion could be used um, in that instance.
And so would it need to be identified in the BVCP to still be valid? As a compelling community need? That just in to me, as identified in the BVCP, which is the last bit of that sentence, implies that you're going to go and find compelling community need in the BVCP. But if that is gone, I hear what you're saying. You're giving people an opportunity to become creative and come with something that you know, is unknown to us yet. It's it's so I think, but anyway, yeah, go ahead.
I think, you know, hanging our hat on the BVCP gives a level of predictability and guidance to applicants. Uh, maybe the word compelling goes a little too far. Maybe it's okay to just say at least equivalent community need related to housing, and then we can look at those BVCP policies.
Yeah, no, that 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 makes sense. I think it was the compelling that it's just like, oh, where's that defined? That sounds good. But I I wasn't sure where it would be. I I think you're right. That that's the point. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I offer a wording suggestion? I think I think what you're saying, ML, is that you're expecting compelling community need to be defined in the BVCP because it says as identified in the BVCP. I think we could avoid that by saying at least equivalent, either use the word compelling or not, community, community need related to housing policies identified in the BVCP. So it's related to the housing policies in the BVCP.
Yeah, rather than so you take the onerous off the wording itself and put it into the policy is going to support it.
Yeah.
Not the definition.
That what you're, what you're saying is it's a compelling community need that is related to the policies that you can find in the BVCP.
Yeah. Well, so Carl, you you hear our 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 concern. It's just like people are going to go, I would go look in the BVCP for the compelling community need as written, but you know, just make it less confusing. I think it's a, I think it's a good op option for people. I like it.
You guys get that language because I I not get it all down.
I think Carl picked it up.
Okay. All right.
Okay, let's keep moving.
Alright, I I have um I have uh, something on uh building design nine nine dash two dash fourteen H three B Roman numeral little two. Page one oh four, are we?
Uh, I have one oh one. I have a couple of things on page one oh one. Sorry, Sarah.
That's okay.
Um, um, so on page one oh one, uh, Roman numeral, little Roman numeral four. Yeah, right there. Um, the last part of this, it talks about optimizing safety of all modes and providing connectivity and permeability through the subject sites. And I I want to say I understand and relate to John's comments about permeability when we talked about the site up on Spruce. Um, I have a concern about permeability. Uh, if it is not going to actually be used, right? I I am concerned about creating permeability for permeability sake rather than permeability that serves a connectivity purpose or will actually be used by people. And the reason why I'm concerned about it, two things. One is I read Jane Jacobs book about the life and death of great American cities, and she very much emphasizes that just because you put a path somewhere or a bench somewhere doesn't mean people will use it. And if you create something that isn't actually useful for people, it then becomes a a danger or a detraction from the site because it becomes a place that people can hide or do unsavory things and that you don't want in the community because nobody uses that space. It's publicly available and there's nobody using it. And I think we all know what can happen when you have permeability that doesn't actually get used. Um, and then the other reason why I'm concerned about it is uh, one of the developments that I lived in here in Boulder has great permeability. It has a huge wide drive and sidewalks that go through the site. And it just, it feels like private space. It doesn't feel like public space. And members of the public do not use it. Um, except if they need to go to a specific restaurant or they're visiting a specific person. And so I don't, I don't want to see permeability for permeability sake. I want to see useful permeability or permeability that will be used because you know, it connects two things, two two locations that people need to go to, and there's no other way to get there that's as easy, right? So I guess I would just use I that's a long-winded way of saying why I would like to add the word useful to useful permeability through the subject site. Or maybe some other word that conveys this is connections and permeability that are going to actually serve a purpose beyond just you can see through it. Does that make sense?
Speaking as a permeability fan, it makes good sense to me and a Jane Jacobs fan, so I can live with that.
So just can I build on that just a little bit? Um, I I would say that maybe the word we're looking for is functional permeability. Safety for all modes. Safety for all modes provide and provide functional permeability. And connectivity through to the um. External to the site because we're actually, we're trying to. It it's funny to say connectivity through the subject site because connectivity relates to outside the site. Permeability is going in and both should be functional um, and not gratuitous or. Whatever descriptor you want to use. Anyway, functional permeability.
If I could provide a clarification, we we intentionally tried to address external connectivity with. Uh, Roman numeral one, uh, Roman numeral four was more fun focused on the internal. Um, aspects of the site. So that's, that's why we wrote it that way.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm fine with however you want to re rewrite that and I like Mark's suggestion of it being functional. Rather than useful, that's a good word, functional. And then my other comment on um. A page one oh one, we're talking about open space here. I think it's a little bit further down the page with a letter B. I think, yeah, so if you scroll down. So something that's missing here, and I don't know if it's intentionally missing or if it just got lost in the shuffle. Is that in our previous discussion about this, we talked about how if there is open space that is calculated. Like this meets the criteria for open space for the project, that it has to be open to all residents and users of the project. Um, not just, for example, the market rate users or not just the affordable housing users, but all users would have to have access to that open space. If it is open space that is calculated to meet the site review needs of the entire project. Um, and I did not see that concept in here and I didn't know if that was intentional. Because I know that there's some complexity here and some behind the scenes conversation probably went on. So I just wanted to check in on that concept.
Uh, we we did consider that. There certainly is some complexity with that. We we did work with our um. Uh, the folks in housing. On that, uh, there was some concern about being that explicit. We felt that it probably made more sense since we're trying to. Generalize some of these that we not include that, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's not something that can't be considered. Uh, in a site review, I I think there were, there just seemed to be. Could be some unintentional consequences by including it.
Yeah, I I understand the complexity around it, at least to some extent. I just. My concern is, um, you know, I I read another book recently, The Color of Law. And it talks about um, the intentional segregation of America. And part of the reason why that intentional segregation was created was for, um, you know. What you might imagine to be rational reasons that uh, uh, of um. Certain people would object to it or be too expensive or people just wouldn't build it if it was desegregated. Like you can really understand their logic and I don't, I don't want to, and I'm not, I'm not trying to compare. A swimming pool that's only open to market rate people to to the kind of segregation that we experienced in the past. I just want to make sure that we don't go down that slippery slope of. Because we recognize that there are some obstacles and some expenses and some logistical barriers that we um, create. Spaces that don't feel welcoming for people and that we have a, we have a project where. The project is approved based on a bunch of open space that a lot of the residents of the project cannot access. Um, and especially the low income residents of the project. So I do think. It deserves really, really serious consideration. And if we're not going to include that, I think we need to have a really good reason why. So I would put that forward again for consideration.
Yeah, George.
Yeah, I I'm I'm, I feel similarly towards Laura. I I guess. A question to Carl, when you mention an unintended consequence. What, what do we think those are? I I I'm curious as a planning board of what, what, what could be an unintended consequence that that would. Raise, raise concern. From that.
I I don't know that um, one comes to mind exactly. I I just, sometimes these criteria can be so specific that it. It can defeat the purpose a little bit and that that was our concern, but. We tried to, you know, work with some language that said something to the effect of, you know. Equivalent open spaces provided to market rate units or something like that. It just. It didn't seem to to work when we were, we were um, developing it. But um, we certainly could take another look and see if there's a better way to say it.
Yeah, I I I tend to be without, without, without really understanding what the unintended consequence could be. I I have a hard time faulting what Laura just said um, around. Sort of that that equity and open space uh, across an entire project. Thank you.
Mark.
Yeah, so um. Back at the diagonal plaza uh, project which we approved and uh, I think Laura was referring to. I I have a question and that was, uh, that first question is. Was the overall open space calculation? Used that included the pool, which was for the use of the market rate units. Was that open space calculated to? Uh, to the benefit of the approval of the entire project? Do you remember?
I mean, in that case, it it, there, the entire open space would count for the entire project. Um, because that's a, you know, there's a figure that you develop based on the open space regulations in the code and then we apply the. The site review criteria, it doesn't change that. It's just the qualitative aspects get looked at through the site review.
So the unintended consequences of that was that BHP not only did not want. Uh, access to the pool, but as I remember, it would have jeopardized. Uh, their ability to build the affordable units on the adjacent site. Because of the, you know, federal tax credit regulations. There, there was, there was something there that BHP wasn't just like. No, we don't want our people using the pool. It was no. Our project cannot be fulfilled with this kind of market rate.
I I think it was the HOA dues. Was that what it was, Mark? Was it, was it the dues related to the?
Better because I I know that was an issue for you, Laura, but um.
I think that's.
Specific that they did not, they were not advocating for, nor did they want access to the pool.
So I I do believe that BHP said, well, if you gave it to me, I wouldn't say no. But then they also said that there were some complications and I think it did relate to like how you pay for those amenities and like the share that would be paid by the affordable housing. And that's what I was referring to when I said, you know, there's always a logical reason for promoting, for allowing. Inequality, right? It's not always done out of malice or out of a feeling of superiority. Sometimes there can be logistical reasons or financial reasons. And maybe as a city. We need to think really carefully about whether those logistical hurdles are something that we can overcome so that we do not create spaces that feel. Like segregation of market rate from affordable. And I do, I do want to read, you know, from the code. This is in our inclusionary housing ordinance in chapter thirteen of the the code. It does say. Um, affordable owner and renter access to amen- amenities. When affordable units are provided onsite in any location or configuration, the affordable owners and renters shall have. Access equal to that of the owners and renters of the market units. Such amenities shall include but not be limited to parks, outdoor play areas, pools, exercise facilities and equipment, et cetera, and it goes on. So we do have that provision in the code, but my recollection was that there was a, an exception that was made in that particular case because of. The arrangement of how the land was being conveyed by the the developer to BHP or something like that, that that. Made it an exception to this particular rule. And I was just trying to close that loophole. I think we might want to close that loophole in site review.
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's in the inclusionary housing ordinance. Is it a loophole or or have we just? I mean, is it just in a different spot? What what you're trying to achieve is it already stated and already part of the code?
It's just, it is in part of the code, but there is a loophole depending upon how the property is conveyed in the process of development. That loophole exists in our inclusionary housing ordinance. We could close it in site review by saying that if something counts toward open space in site review. It has to be equally accessible to all residents of the property. We could. And I don't know that we're going to resolve it tonight. I think it's too complicated, but I I'm just trying to pull from our previous experiences, things that were problematic. That we might be able to fix here and suggest that to staff. If staff have a really good reason why this is not appropriate, I will yield.
Yeah, we can, we can revisit it before it goes to council.
Thank you.
Your hand is gone.
Yeah, I was just gonna say we could add something like um, for uh, that is available for use by all residents. Uh, unless, unless, you know, unless. Mitigating circumstances prohibit that or something so that it's. I don't know, anyways, Carl already said they're gonna take a look, so I will be.
Yeah, I, I think staff uh, has our thoughts on that, so. Thank you, Laura. I think that was a, that was an excellent and important point, so.
Thank you, everybody, for your indulgence. I know it's late. And thank you, staff, for your open mind and considering these things.
Wait, I have a, I, where are we at? I'm at uh, I have something um, in. Building and site design. Which is after landscaping and screening. Does anyone have anything in landscaping and screening?
Okay, I have a a question. We were open space here. Uh, actually back on one oh one and one oh two. And I'm, I'm trying to understand whether the new. Uh, suggested language here winds up decreasing opens, the total amount of. Of area devoted to open space for significant projects. Carl, maybe you can summarize what the impact of this will be.
I don't think any of these criteria would decrease open space. Um, open space is determined by the intensity standards. Um, and we're not changing that. Um, what these criteria are, are the qualitative. Application of the open space. So this is where. You, you first have to figure out the open space, how much there is, and then we determine how the quality of it. By applying these criteria. So this shouldn't, um, wouldn't reduce open space.
Okay. Alright, but there's, so then explicit consideration of the quality is is a big part of that. Okay, good, thank you. I, you, you've made me happy by that.
Um, just a process point. I think Lisa may have left the meeting. Do we need to officially put that in the notes? Like what time she left?
You're right. I don't see her anymore here.
We can say she left at approximately ten forty five or something like.
She put a note in the chat.
Oh, did she? Good.
Yep, I have that noted. Thank you.
Ten fifty.
Ten fifty.
Right on, Lisa. She's on top of it.
Okay, alright, we'll keep scrolling through and people have to say when they.
Uh, building, site, design, citing and design criteria. So I have two in this area. Uh, both of which are just sort of vague, about vague language. One is. Uh, nine dash two dash fourteen H three, uh, three A one. Uh, the in urban contexts, buildings are positioned closer to the property line. Um.
Which page did you see?
This is, I'm sorry, page one oh three.
Yeah, he's right on it. It's that AI.
Right, A, little I. Um. So it just talks about, um, it's this about the public realm and interface. And I just thought that this was um, kind of vague. And it may be that in, in some table somewhere, this is not vague. But closer to the property line is just sort of a vague. It's vague. So I just was curious, Carl, if there are specific um. Uh, setback requirements uh, that uh, I just um, don't remember.
The reason we added this criterion is because. You know, the current criteria are even more vague. Um, obviously, the. Certain zones don't always reflect what the comp is around them. So in a site review, they'll often ask. For a setback modification to position a building, you know, closer to the street, you know, particularly along Pearl Street. Um, or or other places. So we wanted to just have a criteria that kind of ta- takes into account the context. Um, that in a more urban area, you'll see buildings closer to the street and then in a less. Urban area like landscape setbacks are more appropriate. And it just, it calls more attention to that than the current criteria do.
Okay, alright, that's very helpful. Thank you. And then I have another one in the same section, but Mark has his hand up, so.
Go ahead, Mark.
I I don't have anything about this section. I was, uh, Lisa leaving. Made me look at our agenda. And we have item five, which is two items under matters. That if we are going to conclude after the site review criteria and say, wow, it's so late. We're gonna do these later, then let's make that decision so that any staff members. Um, associated with the two information items uh, may be released and go to bed.
Well, that's, that's good. You pointed out, actually, we, at the beginning of the meeting, we already delayed uh, the first of the information items. Uh, to January third.
Oh.
The second. Carl or or Charles, I'm not sure how much time is involved. I think.
Literally done. It it's just for the board to read and if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to staff directly. There won't be any presentation. There won't be any. It's, it's purely for your information. Take a read through it. It's a, a few pages long. If there's any questions, feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just so you know, I I sent an email around about letters to council. Um, but I don't, we'll get very far on that tonight either, so.
Okay.
Alright, let's.
So I.
Have a, have a, yeah.
I I have a couple in this building, setting and design criteria, but Sarah, you should go.
No, no, because mine is in building, is in B. So if you're in A, we'll get to B eventually.
Okay, alright, thank you. I have a couple. Um, one is a general question. Um, the last version that we saw of this had exemptions for some of the smaller, missing middle type projects. Like duplexes, townhomes, mobile home parks. They were exempted from some of these criteria. And I I don't see that idea in here anymore. I suspect I know the reason why, but I want to ask and verify.
I actually thought you might actually ask this question, so I have an answer. Um, I mean, we we exempted those um. Those types of housing types before because though, excuse me. The language was more rigid and strict. Uh, and then it didn't make sense, but in this case, because the criteria is more, you know, discretionary. Uh, we felt that it could be more generalized and that there wouldn't be a need to exempt them because there's. The board has discretion about what can be applied or what makes sense. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Still learning these buttons. I I, that's the answer I thought I was gonna get and thank you for preparing it. I do think it's probably worth a mention somewhere that. The prescriptive criteria can be a little bit more flexible for the missing middle housing types like the duplexes, the townhomes. The small uh, multifamily units like quadplexes and triplexes and stuff like that. Um, if it, you know, I think we all understand the reasons why it might be a little bit more flexible for for those small projects. Um, so, a- and I appreciate that these are no longer like rigid rules, but I still think if that's the intent. That we still could exercise that flexibility, it might be worth mentioning somewhere. Um, my next uh, item here is on page one oh three also. It, I think it's at the top paragraph, so you might need to scroll back up a little bit there. Um, it says. Uh, building, citing and design are compatible with the existing area, character of the area. Emerging character of redeveloping areas or. Emerging character of redeveloping areas or character established in adopted design guidelines or subcommunity and area plans for the area. I have a couple of questions. One is the adopted design guidelines that you reference. And, and by the way, I agree with all of that. I think that's great. The adopted design guidelines. Does that also include the guidance that's in the BVCP for specific areas of town? Or is that just like, here are adopted design guidelines for Boulder Junction?
I mean, I think the intent was these, these specific design guidelines for Boulder Junction. I, I think if we were applying anything. Related to the BVCP, that would point back to the criterion that we were talking about. In A, about compliance with the policies and, and the land use map and.
Okay, I'm just remembering that there's specific guidance in the BVCP for things like the Boulder Valley Regional Center. And I don't know if that's just duplicative of more detailed guidelines that are available elsewhere. Or if that is unique guidance for like the Boulder Valley.
I think in our reviews, in our analysis, like if, in that case, we would be responding to that under the BVCP policy. The criteria, not in this particular one. This one would be if there's a specific area plan or specific. Design guidelines that we would respond to here.
Okay, I can live with that. Um, next point on this, in another part of this document. You, you phrase it slightly differently and you say. The project is designed with an appropriate transition to the adjacent properties considering, so this is about transition areas. Considering adopted subcommunity and area plans or design guidelines applicable to the site, and if none apply. The existing development pattern. And I like that hierarchy of being sort of future oriented, that when we are considering consistency. Whether it's consistency with a transition or any other kind of consistency with the area, that we're future oriented. And first, we give. Sort of privilege or, or uh elevated importance to subcommunity plans, adopted design guidelines, things that talk about the future and where we're trying to take this area. Before we consider the um existing development pattern or the existing context. I think we should privilege, I think we should always throughout this document be privileging. Our plans for the future over the existing context. And I don't know if my fellow board members agree with that. I don't know if that's controversial or not, but I would love to see that sort of hierarchy be adopted throughout the document because you talk about this. Um, you know, considering adopted subcommunity and area plans or design guidelines if applicable and the existing context. You probably talk about that in like six or seven places in the document, and I would love to see it be a hierarchy. Sarah, are you?
Where, where are you in the document? I'm sorry.
Well, the first place it appears is on page one oh three um. Uh, where it says, building, I think it's in the top paragraph, actually.
Okay.
If we want to scroll back up, it says. Uh, building, sighting and design are compatible with the existing character of the area. Emerging character of redeveloping areas or character established and adopted design guidelines or subcommunity and area plans. I think we should be privileging the future vision in terms of compatibility before we think about the existing character. What do other folks think about that?
Sarah.
Well, ML had her hand up first.
Oh, oh, sorry, I missed you, yeah.
Uh, ML.
I, I had it up in anticipation of moving to B. Go ahead, Sarah.
Right, um. Yeah, I, you know. Theoretically, I agree with you, but the lived experience of being in a neighborhood, whatever your neighborhood is. Is uh, you know, you move into a place because you like the neighborhood, you like the way it feels, whatever. Um, and uh, I, I. I think almost by definition, the future planning is not the individual project. The future planning. Are the area plans and the subcommunity plans. And uh, rather than, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but. I don't think the individual project is the space for future proofing. And um, I, I guess I would be, I wouldn't want us to be um unilaterally. Uh, plus, what you think the future should be and what I think the future should be might be very different. And neither one of us is gonna be right because neither one of us actually knows what the future will bring. So. Um, I just think it's a, I, I think it's, I don't think we want to tie our hands quite that much. That's my, my response to that.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate those comments. I just want to clarify that I'm talking about specifically, how do we think about compatibility with the neighborhood? And, and I'm saying that when we think about, is this building compatible with the neighborhood? If we're pegging it to what exists, then we're pegging it to the past, what's already been built. If we're pegging it, it, I think, I do think that the existing context makes difference, and I definitely think that transitions should be sensitive. Um, from, say, for example, an area of lower intensity to an area of high intensity, just like with the last project that we reviewed up there on um twenty-eighth and J. I do think that we need to give some um deference to the transition between the low intensity and the high intensity, but. But I think if we're thinking about, is this project compatible? That the first thing we should think about is, is it compatible with our plans for this area as described in the area plan, not my vision for the area, but.
Right, but then you have to have area, but then you have to have an area plan, and we don't have an area plan for everything. So. Uh, you know, I, I, I think the answer, the, I, my response to your thoughts are. If you have an area plan, then you have, the compatibility has to be to the area plan, and I, I'm gonna guess that. I, I haven't studied this particular paragraph all that closely, but. Um, I do know that area plans are referenced and, and design guidelines and all that stuff are referenced repeatedly, so. Um, and I could, I, I, you know, I could point to the building, the proposed building at. At Folsom and Spruce to say that is so not compatible with the neighborhood that it's going into now, and it's redesigned. And that's been driven by a whole bunch of external factors that had nothing to do with what was actually in. The, a propose, original proposal or in the zoning, right? So I, I just think that you, you open a Pandora's box when you are saying. Compatibility should be defined by what might come.
Well, I, I, to, to be clear, I'm saying that if subcommunity or area plans exist, we should defer to those. And, and then the surrounding community context should also be considered, but that, the over our, the overriding factor is. The subcommunity or area plan that has been adopted if it exists. But uh, you know, if that's a controversial concept that people can't live with. I, I'm not gonna fall on my sword about it, but that, it appeals to me to, to say, when we're considering compatibility, we consider the subcommunity or area plan, if it exists first. And, and I'm not gonna beat the dead horse anymore. I don't know if other people have thoughts about that.
I, I, I can live with that. I, I think it's, I don't think it's necessary to be explicit about the ranking. But uh, of, of course, you consider the area plans and the, and so on, so. I, I agree with you, but I'm not sure how important it is to go into detail and rewriting this section here. Okay, let's move ahead.
ML, did you have your hand up?
Oh, yeah, ML, I'm sorry.
I'm anticipating we're gonna get to the next page. Here we go. Um, so B I. Um. I, I would just like to put a, a thought out. That you've gone a really long way in kind of. Moving away from prescription. And I see this last piece of I have a variety of roof forms and heights. Um. And I wonder if, if what you're really talking about, because you're talking about. Big buildings, whether they're a large floor plan, or floor plate, or a project that has a lot of. You know, multiple buildings. And I would just suggest not, not specifying that it's. A variety of roof forms, but maybe. Go with something that, that has more latitude and gets to the gist of what you're trying to do, which is express a variety of forms and heights. Because. Changing or just saying you want variety of roof forms. It's kind of like a one liner. Whereas if you talk about the form, you're really getting at. What breaks down? That's why I was asking you about those photographs earlier. What gives um visual and experiential um variety. Isn't necessarily a roof form. Or, you know, a sloped roof and a flat roof and a shed roof and a gable roof. But it really is that there is a variety of forms and heights. So I would just get rid of um roof. And um, let it be more. In the spirit of not prescribing. That's the comment I had my hand up for all this time.
I guess, maybe we're gonna ask Carl, why, why, why roof forms? And heights are the specific, I mean, I'm not. Why specifically roof forms versus um ML's suggestion of a variety of forms and heights? What was roof forms of specific intention? What was the intention that you all had?
Well, I, I think the intention was that, you know, through this process, like even through the form-based code process, we've heard a lot of. Community thoughts on development where there were concerns about. Large boxy buildings, rectangular buildings everywhere, and how do we move away from that? Um, so I think that's what this criterion was meant for, whether it needs to have the word roof in it. I don't think it does. I, I think forms and heights accomplishes what we were intending.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think um the language, well, people think about, that's changed the roof shape. Is again um, a concept. It's like, oh, if we change the roof, it, it'll get us there, but I don't think that that. I, I might go with less prescriptive. So thank you, Carl, for um acknowledging that your goal can be met without that specific.
Laura.
Uh, thank you. Uh, and ML, I'm glad you raised this one. I also had some notes about this one. I think it's also connected to, this appears in another place on, a little bit earlier, page one oh three, and I'm sorry, I missed it as we were scrolling, but. Page one oh three, the very top paragraph. If we could scroll back to that. Um, it says. It's on um line four. Building roof design contributes to a city skyline that has a variety of roof forms and heights. If staff are okay with removing the word roof there too, I'm fine with removing it in both places.
Same language, yeah.
But, but my, I mean, here it's particularly talking about the skyline, so I think it is talking about, you know, the tops, but. My, my question is, are we saying that we will never approve another site review with a flat roof? Um, is, is that what we're saying? Cause that is a big change. And, and if that's what staff are recommending, I guess I'd like to hear that that is indeed the recommendation. Or is this more like, this is a best practice that we would encourage, but there's some flexibility?
I, I, I think it's, it's more the latter. I mean, we're, we're moving more towards discretion. Um. So we want to have that level of flexibility, but we certainly want to drive better design.
Would it?
And it says a variety of roof forms. Flat roof is a type of a roof form.
Yeah, but it has to be a variety. It can't just be flat.
No, 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 but I mean, y- you can have that as one of the options.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you've got variety.
So, eh, eh, thank you, ML. I think you're right. Um. So Carl, hearing what you're saying, that this is meant to be more of best practices, I'm just gonna put a suggestion out there. Would it work? Would it be helpful in line five here to say? The approving agency will consider the following best practices rather than the following factors. And make it more clear that, cause these do read as pretty prescriptive now, at least to me.
We, we already say and um, oh, you're, you're talking about line five on what's on the page right here?
Yeah, line five, just rather than calling them, consider the following factors, maybe make it more clear that you're saying, consider the following best practices. I don't know if that clarifies or not. It would for me, but I'm just one person. So I think if, I think if the intention is not to be prescriptive, because to me, when I read that. The one that ML just uh talked about, I think it's on the next page. It looked like thou shalt never approve a building in site review that only has a flat roof.
I mean, our, our intent was that it, it would be the following factors, and I think in our mind, that would be best practices. These are all best practices. So I think we'd want to have consistency in how we, we state this, so. This is language that we already use in site review about following factors, so I think there'd have to be. Some consensus to change this to best practices throughout the document.
Again, I'm not wanting to follow my sword about it, but I just, um, so if, if you scroll back down to page one oh four where ML was in um. Uh, B, little Roman numeral one. It just says, building design, larger floor pay, buildings and projects with multiple buildings have a variety of roof forms and heights. Consider this factor, that larger floor plate buildings have this. To me, it reads as you must have this. And I understand that's not your intent, so I'll just suggest rewording it to, to convey more flexibility, however you want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just want to check in with everybody here. We've passed eleven o'clock. We're making pretty good progress, but uh, uh, is everyone capable of continuing? And does anyone need a five-minute break?
No, I'm gonna need to check out soon. I've got some family things I need to attend to.
Okay. I mean, I think we, I think we have another half hour or something, and then we've completed this. So Brad, what do you think?
I do want to just uh chime in and let you know that we do hope you finish this uh agenda item tonight. We don't have a lot of capacity in January to have this continued into, uh, without kind of significantly impacting the. Uh, rest of our schedule for the year, so. We're, we're here to forge it. Thanks.
All right, uh, any other thoughts? Anyone need a break, or should we just keep?
Let's plow through.
Okay, let's keep.
Keep going.
Okay.
Um, can I, can I just ask, I'm sorry, a- again with the building roof heights. Carl, you had mentioned something at the outset of our meeting about potentially changing the way that height is measured. To allow for some more flexibility. Um, a- and I don't know what that would look like.
We, we had a suggestion. There's actually a. There's a conditional height requirement in the code that's not in site review. That allows some flexibility in the RH zones for pitched roofs to go, you know, up to like forty feet. To encourage pitch roofs, and the suggestion from the group was, we should be doing that in other zones. Um, and I think there's, there's a lot of agreement in the community about that. Um, so that would, it wouldn't be in site review, but that's probably something that we would look at in the future. To kind of add some flexibility to get more pitched roofs throughout the city. So that's what I was referring to.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, so it's not.
It's, it's like nine, seven, six of the code.
Okay.
To read that section.
I think it's a great idea, and it also sounds like it's not anything we need to deal with tonight, because it's not about site review. So, thank, thank you for answering my question.
Yep.
Uh, I do have one here on page one oh four, sorry, about blank walls. Um, it's little Roman numeral three on um page one oh four. Uh, little Roman numeral three, I think you have to scroll up a little bit. Um, it talks about. Uh, the last sentence here, blank walls along the most visual portions of the building are avoided. What do you mean by the most visual portions of the building? Is that visual from the public realm? Visual from where?
Visible.
Yeah, I, I think it's supposed to be visible, actually.
Okay, but.
Cause we wanted it to be like, it could, it may not necessarily be the public realm. It could be like, there might be a, a four-story building next to a two-story building, and that. Wall may not be facing the public realm, but it's visible. So we didn't, we wanted it to be um not just the public realm. So I think the language should say visible.
What would be a non-visible or a less visible portion of a building?
Well, like something that's blocked by another building from, from the public realm further away. Or in inward, you know, pointed inward to the site and not, not visible. Again, I think this is where those areas where we have to use discretion, you know, in, in the application of these criteria.
Okay, I, that, that's fine. Thank you for that uh explanation. And this section that talks about blank walls, I didn't see any um exceptions for industrial. And this section that talks about blank walls, I didn't see any um exceptions for industrial buildings. Is that intentional?
Again, because these are made, you know, more discretionary, we, we took out some of that more specific language about industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's keep going.
I have something on one oh five. Oh, Sarah, are you before one oh five?
No, no, mine is on page one oh six.
Um. So Carl, I'm looking at uh I I'm looking at triple I. And I'm looking at um four. And so now these, we're getting back to um some pretty directive uh criteria. And so here's my question, and it might be for Hella a- as well. Um on these that are talking in such specificity about uh design, does it make sense? Is it possible to re- to refer that criteria to DAB's approval? I mean, it seems like this should go to a design board um to review and make sure that these particular things, these particular design um components are are met.
Yeah, under DAB's authority, there has to be a referral to DAB. Um, so that, that will be in the planning board's discretion to send something to DAB. For example, after a call then but recommend that it be referred to DAB when it comes back as a site, site review before the planning board acts on it. Or the other way, um, the planning board has sometimes done it is that if the planning board is not sure a project meets that criteria and gives direction on what to improve, then to have DAB review it based on that feedback.
So there isn't anything we can trigger in the use in the site review trigger to go to DAB?
No, not directed because it's not within DAB's review authority.
Um, you know, I'm thinking about things like um new, new building, emerging building materials. I mean, you've got a pretty co- on, on I here on one, you've got a pretty comprehensive list of what is considered high quality acceptable material. And you know, the world is changing. There's a lot of, a lot of exploration in materials, especially in trying to deal with, with climate issues and, and carbon issues. And it, it seems that when you get into this level of, of specificity that we should almost try to build in um I don't know. Do you have any, do you hear what I'm saying, Carl?
Yeah, um, we actually had language that you get that what you're talking about because, again, you know, we ratcheted back the prescriptive nature. I think we might have removed it, like feeling like, you know, that we already had discretion to allow alternatives in this language, but we could add it back. Uh, we used similar language in the form base code, so if there's more comfort from the board, we could look at bringing that back.
Yeah, I guess maybe note to, note to us. Um, we should, we should defer these kinds of these specific things, we should just refer them to DAB. It, it, there's just a lot of um there's a lot of considerations that aren't um black and white. You know, do you use one kind of material versus another? And especially if they're being held accountable to their carbon footprint. That's going to matter. What materials you're using. And it's not just about aesthetics, it's not just about, well, I kind of like the way this looks, and this is durable. There are more and, and more there are greater implications to designing a building that is holistic and environmentally conscious than um, do we like the way it looks?
Okay.
And I'm, I'm not sure how to, how to get, get it get that level of consciousness into it.
Okay, I, I think we can leave it up to staff to uh expand that a little bit in terms of options. Okay. Moving ahead.
Um, John.
Yeah.
So uh nine, page one oh six, nine dash two dash fourteen H four A Roman numeral little one, additional criteria. Um, when we sent this to council, we were at a hundred and fifty feet. Now we're at two hundred feet. I'm just curious how we got two hundred, a two hundred foot long wall. It's a really big long wall. So I'm kind of curious how we got there.
Yeah, Carl.
Carl, how did we get there?
Uh, you know, we, again, in, in the spirit of trying to add a little bit flexibility, we got a little, we got pushed back from the site review focus group on the um hundred and fifty. Um, and then we were thinking, you know, the requirements for two different building bays, like per number two below is really looking at two one hundred foot segments. So we thought, okay, maybe to offer some flexibility, maybe we go to two hundred. But.
But should, if we do that, then shouldn't the facade it, the item in, in Roman numeral two be one hundred feet, not a hundred and twenty feet? I mean, if.
Hundred and twenty feet just means if you have a building that goes over a hundred feet, it then puts it in that category where you have to have two segments.
No, I'm, 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 that's what I'm, I know, but because we've now made the the building can't, the building cannot exceed two hundred feet in any length. If, if we have a building that's two hundred feet long, which I hope we never will, that's a really, really, really long building. Um wouldn't it make sense then for the building facades to not exceed that, that bef- that, that you, your building facade can be up to a hundred feet? When it's, and at that point, it has to be designed to appear as at least two distinct buildings. So anything of like, does that, am I making sense? It just seems like um hundred and twenty and two hundred are not there. They don't seem like compatible.
But it, but, but it's not saying each bay would be a hundred feet, right? Like it could be a hundred and twenty foot length building divided into two sixty foot bays. So the, the length of the bay is not necessarily connected in that way.
The parameters, they're not, they're not, they're not directives.
Right, but we, we had, there had to be a doorway, an entranceway every fifty feet, and that got kicked out, like there were, it just feels like we've lost some um tools to bring these, the ground floor of these buildings to a, to the pedestrian scale, to the people's scale um and to uh an activated street. And I you know, I, that's my, that's the point I'm trying to make. Whether it can change or not, I suppose the answer is no, but I just, this seems like very long walls.
Well, the Carl, my perception is that the reason for this, that this happened is to remove prescriptive uh requirements.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking about a building that was just at landmarks that's on Pearl and I think Seventeenth, maybe? Where the developer wants to redevelop one of the walls into three separate bays, basically, and because of whatever design requirements, they couldn't recess the bays. So they did it with like different colored paint and expression lines and things like that. And it actually was a very nice design that the landmarks board was very happy with. I don't know how long that wall was. I don't know if there's anybody here tonight that knows what that project is that I'm thinking of.
Well, I could, I, I don't know that project, but I can tell you that uh there was in the form base code in um Transit Village, at least the second half of Transit Village uh, on the north side of the um of the, of Goose Creek. Or the bike path, whichever bike path that is, um had a limit of a hundred and fifty feet, isn't that right, Carl?
That's right.
Right, and there was a no, it was a it was a hundred feet, it was a hundred feet. And one of the projects, one of the buildings came in with a request to be a hundred and fifty feet. Um, and it's a very, it is a very, and that's a big it's a big building and it, you know, it's got window, I mean, it's, it's actually, I think, grills because it's parking on the ground floor, it's, but you know, I just think if you're going to get two hundred feet, and then you're going to get someone saying, well, what about two hundred and fifty? I just were, I just feel like this is a, this is giving uh in the name of flexibility um opening the door to very large buildings. Which I just, and I agree, Laura, that they're nice ways to break them up, but or to make them look like they're broken up, but um this just seems like a really potentially big building problem. Especially since Carl, didn't you say a hundred and fifty was best practice?
Yeah.
So why aren't we using best practice? Anyways, I, I've made my point, well.
Laura.
Well, I had a different um section on this page. So Mark, if you were responding to Sarah.
I, I am. Um if, if you read Roman numeral one and two together then if you are successful at implementing a hundred and twenty foot maximum length for the facade um even if the building itself is two hundred or whatever, it, 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 the building in theory could be longer than two hundred, as long as you're breaking up the facade in such a way um to that it appears as at least two distinct buildings, then Roman numeral two achieves what the concerns have, that achieves, uh, ameliorates the um, the concerns that have been voiced. And so uh whether a building is two hundred, two hundred and ten, and, and no one's suggesting two hundred and ten or two hundred and fifty, there's, there, we're saying in code two hundred feet is the maximum length. And we're saying that one hundred and twenty feet is the maximum that a facade can appear to be a built, you know, one building. So I don't have a problem with it because we're accomplishing what we want, which is a visual interest and not a big massive um two hundred foot long wall.
All right.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to have this up. I think it's going up on its own magically.
All right.
I, I had a different point. So if anybody wants to continue this conversation, I don't have strong feelings about a hundred and fifty versus two hundred. Maybe because I'm not good with math and distance. So I would kind of trust Carl and staffs. Um, you know, what do they think is reasonable? What's been done in the city? Does the combination of Roman numeral one and two adequately break up the massing by making it appear like it's two separate buildings? I, I think that's going to be a, what you want to take to city council, I don't have a strong opinion on. But I had a different point on this page, though.
Okay, let's move to your.
Okay, it's, it's same section, it's in uh four A here, and it talks about um online between line seven and eight. Um, it says to create visual permeability into and through sites. And I just, I'm curious whether this visual permeability is different from the sort of transportation connectivity and permeability that we talked about previously. Like what's, what's visual permeability?
Uh, it could be like indented areas that are used as courtyards. It is, it is kind of used in a different a different way here. Uh, it could be a pathway going in, or it could be just um things that break up the mass.
Okay, thank you for that. That was my question. Um, uh, yeah. All good, all good. You can keep going. I do have a couple on page one oh seven.
So I have one on one oh, on page one oh seven also.
You go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so nine dash two dash fourteen H four B Roman numeral one, little B two. The language about um if no guidelines or plans for an adopt, are adopted for an area. So it talks about the height of the building. Uh, the building height is compatible with the height of buildings in this running area, and the building is located near a multimodal mo- multi-modal corridor. Near, near is not a defined term. So I feel like that's pretty vague. And I would suggest replacing that with adjacent. Um, because near if I'm a developer and I'm four blocks away from a multimodal, I could, I could argue that I'm near a multimodal corridor. So I just think that term needs to be refined a bit. I would suggest adjacent.
Laura.
I'm sorry, I'm still thinking about Sarah's suggestion. I'm gonna put my hand down.
Okay, well, I, I think oh, Mark, you can respond.
Okay, John, if you need, go ahead.
No, I'm just agreeing with Sarah. I think.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm disagreeing with Sarah and that I think um uh, if I think about uh some of our uh streets have a, a short block, and so if I was a short block away from a multimodal corridor or a transit corridor, um that qualifies as near, but it doesn't qualify as adjacent. And so adjacent means next to. And so um I, I'm actually completely fine with near and would uh oppose uh adjacency because of its specificity.
Okay, so then what's the definition of near, Mark? I just, I think that it's, it's, I realize that we've gone in this other direction of, of um uh prescriptiveness. But near, near doesn't mean anything. I mean we, we need, we, it just doesn't mean anything. So we need a term that means something. If it's not adjacent, we need something. We need within a block of, or just something that's specific. Cause near doesn't mean, near is a meaning, is essentially a meaningless term.
Well, okay, we, we talk about um first and last mile, and I would say something less than a mile, but um you know, greater than adjacent. So if we want to put, it, it's kind of like the whole definition of, you know, uh, the old judge's definition of pornography. I know it when I see it. Um, that it is, or purient was the word, I believe. Anyway, it's, you know, near, it, it would be up to uh planning board in the site review, is it near enough?
But, what does that mean? It's like, it doesn't mean it, and a mile, a mile boulder is only like six miles across.
Right.
So everything would be near a multimodal corridor.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for a mile. I'm just saying that near uh is, near is good enough for me, and it's good enough for us using our judgment. A lot of things that um surrounding, what is surrounding me? Well, you know, you, there, there are, there are a lot of words that um, that are not numerical in nature. And um so near surrounding uh higher, what does higher mean? Higher intensity. You can, you can apply this, you can play the um, the word game of it doesn't have a meaning with many words that we've, we've adopted and, and used in criteria uh for years now.
It's too late to play a word game, Mark.
Yeah.
I'm finding, Brad has his hand up.
Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, if I, I can just wade into this a little bit as a person that finds themselves kind of um speaking to this on a fair basis. Um you know, a lot of times um there's kind of this desire of, of planners or to, to envy the fact that engineers often get to deal with much more prescriptive, precise things like pipe has to be four feet and three feet isn't acceptable or that type of thing. But I would, I would uh I would observe that the realm of planning does involve a lot of subjectivity at some level of compatibility uh nearness, um these types of things, and that um just uh brings. Um, just uh brings to mind the earlier comment that it meant uh brought up about your role as being judges. In a case-specific situation. Um, I I I don't know what the answer is, but I I will tell you that when crafting code. Uh, for zoning regulations, we are cognizant of the fact that by design, there is subjectivity, if you will. Inherent in the land use process that's um somewhat unique and different than that of street standards. Sewer main standards and things like that, so um I would just offer that observation of.
Okay. Laura, do you wanna talk about this or?
I mean, I think if staff are okay with near, like I understand Sarah's concern, but I, I do agree with Mark that adjacent is too constraining. And I don't have a better suggestion, I was thinking maybe something having to do with walking distance or five-minute walk, but that also is subjective. So I'm, you know, I'm, if staff are okay with near, I'm okay with near, although I do appreciate Sarah's concern. Okay, I do have a couple other on this page if we're done with that one.
Yeah, go ahead, staff has heard our thoughts, so we can hear your.
Okay, um, at the very top of the page and you might wanna scroll back to split it with the previous page. We're talking here about um buildings that are, get a height modification. And this is talking about a, a building no taller than three stories and subject to a height modification. It says the building's height, mass and scale is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. But it doesn't mention anything about sub-community plans, area plans and design guidelines. And I would like to suggest adding that in somehow, I see Carl kind of nodding.
Yeah, I mean, the reason we distinguish these is, you know, A is really focused at, you know, those other. Forms of height modifications that aren't in the community benefit category or aren't necessarily adding a lot of mass. With a fourth or a fifth story, there, like, this could be like a single-family house. That has descending slope in the backyard that in order to add an, an extra floor that's usable, might go over the height limit by. Like two feet at, you know, most, it's really meant to capture those types of projects, so we just felt like a basic. Finding of compatibility was sufficient rather than having to like add the language about. Adopted plans or guidelines.
Okay, if it, I guess if this is about buildings that won't get any taller than three stories and it's that kind of thing, I'm, I'm fine with it as it is. Suggestion withdrawn. I have another one on this page uh about views. It's on page one oh seven, if you scroll down a little bit, it's number three, Roman numeral two, yeah. Um, it says if the proposed building is located, pardon me, adjacent to a public park plaza or open space. That the, the buildings are cited or designed in a manner that avoids or minimizes blocking of prominent public views, totally fine with that. I'm just curious, what, what's a plaza in the context of Boulder? Like, I can't think of any particular things that I would call a plaza.
I mean, I, I think of um Thirteenth Street, south of Walnut. The brick surfaced. Area with the concave building that surrounds it, I would call that a plaza. I don't know if there's a lot of examples in Boulder, but that's one that I would definitely call a plaza.
Is that a public plaza or is that a private?
I mean, some of it is, it's, a lot of it is in the public, it might be kind of shared, but there are public improvements. Um, al- along Thirteenth Street where the bike path goes through north-south.
Okay, I guess I was just wondering, it, is what we mean here, like, public lands that are managed by. The Parks Department and the Open Space Department, and if that's what we mean, could we just say that rather than a public park plaza or open space? Like, is this open space with a capital O S or is this just any open space?
Uh, in this case, we did intend this to be public. Um, we, we wanted there to be a higher level of um, you know, protection. From, you know, these areas that are public, that are pub, that are actually city uh managed.
Okay, then I, then I might just say city-managed parks or open space, but it's just a suggestion.
Well, on, on that example that Carl came with, I think a portion of it is privately owned, but. Uh, available to the public or there's public access or something like that. So I, I think that areas like that should be included in, in this. Uh, consideration.
Is it, is it city managed, though?
I partly not, I, I've noticed some non-city people working there, so, but I don't know more than that.
Well, I'm happy to leave it to staff to figure out how to, how or whether they need to clarify that. But when I read that without any clarification, I'm like, well, there's a lot of open space on private land, so.
We'll definitely look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone, have nothing else, just FYI.
Okay, let's keep going.
I have a couple more, does anybody else have more?
I have something on one fifteen.
Uh, I have something on uh one oh nine.
Okay.
Uh, so on page one oh nine. This is actually something that was struck, um, it was six A, the former little A there. Where it talks about the density of a project may be increased in the BR one district through a reduction in the lot area requirement. I didn't know why that was struck, was that, is it just not useful or? It was that pre-existing?
Uh, the A right there, the density, it is, um. Well, we reworded it in the language below, we, we are proposing, there, there's a. There's a host of criteria that apply in the BR one and we, this has been in this particular ordinance for. Um, since the com- community benefit days. Um, but basically, there's a bunch of criteria that are not often used. They allowed up to a four point O F A R and B R one. Um, usually, it's almost impossible to get to that point, a lot of the criteria are redundant with other criteria. So our proposal for simplification was to just remove that language. And then allow up to a three point O F A R and that community benefit would apply. When the F A R exceeds two point O in the BR one, so it just, it required us to kind of restructure this language. So that's why you'll see a lot of strikeout in this section.
Okay, thank you.
This is something that we've talked about with the board before, we're, we're getting into kind of parts of the ordinance that. Were not discussed last time and we didn't change.
Totally fine, I just was reading it and I didn't remember, when we looked at this before, I'd only been on planning board for a month and I was confused. So I just wasn't sure why it was struck, I'm totally fine with it, though. Uh, my next one's on page one eleven. Um. So this has a bunch of um. Uh, I think it's a, a little letter B. Um. So it, it talks about. Uh, uh, reasons why open space could be reduced. And I was curious why being situated next to or adjacent to existing public open space or recreation amenities. Why that was not considered to be a reason why open space could be reduced? Cause like, if you're right next to a public park and I'm, I'm thinking about like the parkside residential designation in the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. And in that instance, they talked about, well, you could reduce the open space and have more density. Cause they're like literally right next to the Valmont City Park, and I know that's not a BR two zone, it's different. But I was just curious why that logic didn't show up here, that if you're like right next to public open space, you could have less open space on your property.
Um, we, we talked about this earlier in this meeting, this particular section um is existing language. In the site review criteria, we were just tweaking the language, so we, we weren't looking at doing any. You know, major changes to this particular section, that's something that could be recommended. That if it's adjacent to open space, there could be a reduction, but we weren't looking to, to change this since it's already in the code.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna make a big deal about it, I see George has something to say, though.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Oh, um, I, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supportive of, of a change around that, just cause. I personally don't believe that public land should subsidize open space on, on individual projects. I think that can be the discretion of planning board and council when those things come out. But I don't think a developer should start there, so I just wanna put my two cents on that, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have the same attitude as Georgia.
Okay. Um, I do have a, a question that may or may not fit here. Sorry if this is too late in the meeting for this, but in the previous version, um, uh, Carl, you talked about how. There was a density bonus in site review criteria previously that had been removed and I had expressed. I just wanna make sure that doesn't get lost, cause I think what you had said was it was removed from site review because it was being considered through other channels. I just wanted to check in and make sure those other channels are still moving forward.
Those other channels are, are basically the new work program items that city councils ask us to work on, so that's kind of under the name zoning. For affordable housing, so we are embarking on that and we'll be talking to council and bringing the information to planning board in the, in the coming months. Um, on what those options might be.
Great, okay.
What was taken out is kind of what inspired some on council to ask us to continue exploring those.
Great, okay, thank you, thanks for um just keeping us posted, I only have one more, it's on page one thirteen. ML, did you have something before that? Did anybody else have something before one thirteen?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, on page one thirteen, uh, C, little C. Um, I think it, it might be further down, may, maybe it's this one, um, it talks about fifty-five foot. Uh, yeah, uh, so it's online between eighteen and nineteen, it says. The approving authority may approve a height up to fifty-five feet if the following criteria are met. I'm just gonna put out my suggestion that instead of naming fifty-five feet, we just talk about the city's chartered height limit, which as we've talked about in the past, could change up or down. Um, just a suggestion, take it or leave it, and I'm done.
Okay. Any other? Anybody else has concerns, comments?
I have something on one fifteen.
One fifteen, okay. Let's hear it.
So under A. Um. Alternative method of compliance, so under A, it's got a list of um. Will improve facilities or services delivered by a list of things. And then the underlying or will provide an arts, cultural, human services, housing, I would um. Like to add in environmental and greenhouse gas reduction or other benefits. I would like to add those two uh environmental kind of climate action. That we're starting to see. With our upgraded carbon footprint requirements. As a community benefit objective.
Mark, what do you think?
I, I, I'm not opposed, I, I'm just trying to um. Think of an example or can you give us an example, ML, of something? That would be an environmental benefit uh that would qualify.
Um. Yeah, so if someone decided that they would make a building to the perceive house standards.
Say it again?
That's a, that's a huge, that's a huge under um service, because you really reduce your. Your um energy use and your footprint of the building. Did you?
Okay.
So, um, so building a building to a particular, to a, a much higher standard than code. That would provide environmental and or greenhouse gas reduction um. Designing a building so that it can maximize the um solar. We see buildings being quote, ready for affordable takes, but we don't see them necessarily maximizing. So that they can, and that, these are things that buildings can do. Um, people don't tend to necessarily do them, but if they're gonna be getting. It's a, it's a pathway to higher compliance, there's a whole lot of different strategies that people can do, green roofs, vegetated roofs. Um.
Well, given, given that we um don't have a lot of specificity around any, any, any other. Uh, benefit.
Well.
Arts, cultural, I, I'm just saying, I, I, I guess I'm not opposed, uh, given that it's, it's not. Super specific here anyway, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
It just seems that it should be on the table. The environmental factors.
Seems to me reasonable to consider those as possibilities, we're, we're not making any commitment on that front, so. Laura?
Um, I, I'm fine with adding the word environmental in there. You know, human services, housing, environmental or other benefit, I'm looking at the one point twelve section that Sarah pointed out earlier on enhanced community benefit. And it does mention um spaces for the arts, community gathering space, public art, land for parks, open space, environmental protection or restoration. Um, you know, it, it does talk about some environmental things, not specifically what ML is talking about in terms of efficient buildings and, and that sort of thing, but. Um, it does talk about environmental purposes as potentially part of expanded community benefit.
Okay, I sense a, a positive attitude towards that.
So add the word environmental in here? Is there any reason from staff's perspective why that would not work?
I, I, I think it's completely reasonable to add that here, um, we, we added this language to, you know, try to capture those. Um, unique innovative projects that might not have been captured by community benefits, so I think adding. Environmental makes, is aligned with these other factors, that makes sense to me.
Hey, Laura?
Oh, nope, sorry, I'll put my hand down, although I will just say for the record that if you're gonna make me do something else besides affordable housing for community benefit. You're gonna have to be super convincing for me to vote for it, cause we just need housing so much.
All right, forewarners, forearmed. Okay.
Done.
Wow, any other comments? All right, so I think we need to take the vote on making a recommendation.
Oh.
Can we just talk, can we talk about what that might look like?
Sure, that's what we need to do. You may have some thoughts, Laura, let's hear them.
I, I think that Sarah has taken on just an enormous task of trying to, um, you know, record all of our input. My sense from our discussion was that we have given our thoughts to staff. And I, I personally would be fine with just saying that we recommend adoption of the ordinance. And we recommend that staff consider our discussion tonight in the, in the ordinance that they bring forward to council or something like that, like. I wanna just leave it in staff's hands to say, I trust you, we've had a good discussion, you don't have to bring it back to us, cause I think that would screw up your schedule. Like, please go forth in good faith with what we have said tonight and take something beautiful to council.
Other thoughts?
I like the language of taking something beautiful to council.
I know, I do too, I think that was well put, Laura.
I knew that we take something beautiful to council.
Yeah, I second it.
We have Carl going to council for something.
Yeah, Carl gets to, he's the beautiful thing.
I mean, if folks are generally okay with, with that idea, then we could ask Hella for how to craft a recommendation. I mean, if folks are generally okay with with that idea, then we could ask Hella for how to craft a recommendation, like what that would look like.
I have a, I have a uh something I'd like to mention. I I think in general, I think that's a reasonable idea, but. There is something significant enough about how we. Uh, deal with the uh Boulder Valley Comp. Considerations, and we spent enough time on that this evening. That I think it might be reasonable, and I'd be interested to see what your attitude is, to include one condition. And that is that uh that the language. Uh, dealing with with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan considerations. Is. You know, should be included. As a condition, and and we had several different versions of of that, and we can decide. Which language we think is most appropriate, but I feel that that is significant enough and. A function of our fundamental duty is as a planning board. That we should not put that in the hands of staff. Uh, regarding that that matter. And I'd be interested in your thoughts on that.
But John, we did send staff three versions. Um, of that language, so are you suggesting that we vote on? All three and whichever one gets the majority is the language that we recommend to staff or that we recommend be incorporated into the. Material.
Yes.
Didn't we do that? Then did, I mean, I believe that that you drafted the three and we voted on all three. Right, I know that we, I certainly didn't count. The votes, um, and we could certainly re-vote, but I do know that I do remember us voting on all three items.
Well, my point is not so much which which of those three items is, but we want to be explicit that. Or at least I do, and I I'm I'm not sure I'm speaking for the majority, that we want the language changed. Accordingly.
So the language is explicit that. Uh, we can, we can utilize. We can reference the entire Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Um, that that, so whichever language the staff chooses, the understanding is. Uh, that it allows us to reference the Boulder Valley Comp Plan in its completeness.
Exactly.